At of two thousand and twenty-two, I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven oh seven P M. Uh let's go through our roll call. Miss Alfonso Wells.
Present.
Mister Mizer.
Here.
Mister Price.
Here.
Miss Salisbury.
Here.
Miss Scales.
Here.
Miss Tribbling.
Here.
Mayor Schwarzwester.
Yeah.
Wonderful, so uh we're gonna move to item three, which is public comment. Uh we have none for tonight. Uh so let's move, just keep going to three A interview for building committee liaison position. So who wants to take that one on? Greg, should you do that, Mister Bachi, or or should I kind of lead into things?
Yeah, we uh we had discussed last month about appointing uh one or or several building committee liaisons. Uh we were looking for residents who had backgrounds in engineering or architecture uh to take these these roles. Uh we did receive one application from Michael O'Connor of Black Hawk Street, and I think he's here. Did I see him?
He's logged in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, present.
Um so uh Mister O'Connor is here with us, did have a short conversation with him yesterday. And I he's he seemed very excited to want to help uh with the project. And I'll just turn it over to him, Mister O'Connor, if you could just give us a tell us who you are, tell us about yourself, what your professional background is, and how you think you could be be an asset to us.
Thank you, Mister Bachi, thank you, everyone else in attendance. Um I'm a resident of Swissville, I bought a house on Black Hawk Street.
Oh, excuse me, Mister Mister Connor, is it possible for us to see you?
It it is, but.
Uh-oh, it mean it, Mister.
Uh I muted yourself.
Okay, I'm back, I'm back, let's see, I'm back, but it says video is stopped, I'd like to, I'd like you to see me. I even put a tie on, but I don't know how to, let's see, oh, there you go, there you go, there you go, okay.
There we go. Perfect.
Okay, cool, sorry, sorry about the sunlight, I'm actually in my car. I'm a I'm a resident of of Swissville, I bought a house on Black Hawk Street in two thousand and eight. I live there with my wife Allison and our two boys, our two young boys, they go to uh Edgewood Primary School. And actually, I was a resident even before that, a little bit before that, I rented uh a again on Black Hawk Street, I've been um I am a civil engineer. My background is in civil engineering and I work for a consultant, mostly doing work for PennDOT, City of Pittsburgh, Allegheny County, on transportation program pro- projects, so I'm a highway and streets and traffic signals guy, I'm I'm not a I'm not an architect, I'm not a structural engineer, but I deal more with transportation engineering, I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Pennsylvania. And I'm I'm also a certified transportation operations engineer. I'm, you know, I I heard about the the position, the volunteer position to serve uh on the building building committee, I I uh heard about it through my friend Lisa Whitney, the architect, and she just suggested that I um, you know, vol- volunteer to see if there was any need uh for my for my services, I I wanted to know a little bit more, Mister Bachi, about the position and exactly what it entails. Um my understanding, it's a liaison position, so I assume I would be mil- meeting with the uh the new, you know, the the proposed borough buildings, architect and engineers um and, you know, maybe, I don't know, maybe attending some of their um construction coordination meetings. And then uh somehow, you know, interacting with the public to uh, you know, tell people, you know, maybe the the progress, the building progress. And and maybe, you know, the the short-term look ahead of what's happening next, when it's happening. And and just, you know, being involved in the construction. Uh so, yeah, that's that's it about me, I I went to the University of Pittsburgh, if anybody cares. Uh if anyone's a Pitt fan, and yeah, I love Swissville, I uh I um, yeah, I like Swissville, I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, just.
Thank you guys for for serving, thank you guys for doing what you do for the community.
Sure, just to follow up on Mister O'Connor's question, basically, you know, we uh we have scheduled a monthly meeting, um it's on the Thursday preceding this meeting. So whenever the last Wednesday of the month is, it'll be on the Thursday prior to that with the building committee, and the building committee is Mister Price, Miss Alfonso Wells, and Miss Scales. Um myself, Miss Ansel, and Chief Watson. Um we meet with the uh with the architects and engineers from Core and from L S S E. Right now, we have a a meeting set uh set up once a month. Um it could it could increase as we get to the um to the end of the end of the design process. And it will depend what's going on during construction process, how often we meet. I'm sure we'll have a bi-weekly or some kind of, you know, regular meeting during construction. Um or monthly or whatever the architects feel is is necessary. But um you would you would uh be asked to attend those meetings and basically, you know, look at, you know, from your professional uh background, you know, what um if maybe there's something, you know, uh we could do a little different, a little better, whatever, just as a a outside set of eyeballs, and also, you know, um report if people have questions about it, may, you know, sometimes there are people don't like calling the municipality. So then maybe they could uh reach out to you via email or phone or whatever um for some information, so that's basically.
Okay.
That, and the the position would be until the building is done, once the building done is done, the committee goes away, and so does the liaison position. Which is about good. Um right now, we're projecting um roughly around March two thousand and twenty-four for that completion.
Understand, okay, yeah, thank you for that summary. Thank you for the summary, I understand a little bit better, so that it sounds like it it would be a monthly or bi-weekly meetings, and then uh offering my time to the public to uh communicate what happens at those meetings and what's happening with the construction of the proposed municipal building.
Right. Yep.
Okay, cool. Yeah, got it, okay, yeah, that sounds interesting. Um and then, um yeah, so it's just sort of to to help the council out, help help the municipal government out by uh, you know, supporting them uh with with uh, you know, interactions with the public. Sometimes I I read Facebook uh postings, and not everyone's always happy with the uh function of our municipal uh government. Which which, you know, it's great to have citizens involved, of course, I you, you, um, but uh I I just, you know, as a volunteer, as a citizen myself, I I I just um, I I want to serve on the committee, I think it's interesting, I think it's really cool. I but I guess my answer would be when there is maybe some pitchforks and torches that come uh to to direct them to our paid architects and engineers and to our um full-time staff. If there are any tough questions or controversies that come up.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and and direct that you can uh direct them directly to one of the three council members who are on the the building committee, so you're essentially working with us. Um not more so just being the primary and the sole contact with our community members. But a lot of times, as Greg said, you know, a lot of folks do not feel comfortable calling the boroughs. Sometimes folks, even though we we have smiles on our face and we say, hey, please talk to us, folks don't want to talk to us. They feel a little bit more comfortable speaking with their fellow neighbor, you know, in terms of what some frustrations maybe, or what some concerns maybe, or even just simple feedback. And so the the goal of a liaison that is a volunteer is that you are helpful in the process of development, developing the overall borough building that we can make sure that we are incorporating the the feedback that we're receiving from the community. That we're we're actively hearing some of that that feedback, if it's even, you know, coming your way. Because a lot of times with us as members of council, we're we're busy doing the work a lot of times as well. And so
Okay.
The benefit of a liaison, especially someone that has somewhat of a background in construction, is that for one, there is a a fundamental understanding in terms of the overall design and structure and the the building of of this municipal building. But then also the other benefit of having a liaison is that you you are active in the community. And some are are a fashion, and so that basically every month when we're meeting and we're talking about X, Y, and Z as it relates to the design and the and the structure of the building. You can provide helpful feedback that's like, hey, you know, just by the way, you know, this is some of the the feedback that it that I'm I'm receiving back from the community as it relates to the building. Or hey, you know, by the way, I know, you know, this is some of the designs aspect, but why this may be helpful, we look at it from a different point of view or angle. So essentially, we're definitely not, you know, expecting you to be the primary and sole contact uh with members of the community, but it's to work with us uh on this overall project.
Yeah.
Thank.
None of us three. None of us three committee members uh have a construction and engineering background. Uh our committee is made up of two lawyers and a professor. And we want to tap into the hive mentality of people in our community that know, you know, more than we do. So we don't miss anything.
Understood, thanks, guys, for that explanation, that's helpful. So yes, I'm still interested in serving on the committee.
Thank you, welcome.
And Mister Connor, your friend Lisa, she's on our planning commission, right?
Yes, yep, Lisa Whitney, E O S Architect Studios, right there on um, oh, I can't remember, is that Washington or Noble, I always forget. I know Lisa because our kids used to go to the daycare there on the corner of a few years ago, uh it's since changed hands, it's the old, it's the old bank that had then changed into the um uh the gym and then became a daycare, and that's how I know Lisa, just uh through the through the community.
And so I remember you um when you showed interest in the um some of the openings that we had with our commissions. Because I remember I was really intrigued by your background with the transportation and the traffic control signals. My question is in terms of, you know, I know you live in Swissville, in terms of like engagement in the community. Um what are some of the, you know, acts of service or engagement that you are involved in within the community?
Yeah, the only thing I could speak to, really, it was trying to improve the small park down by the Martin Luther King East Busway. I forget, is it ro- by the Roslin Station, I used to catch the bus there occasionally, and my kids used to play at the playground, but it needed uh repair. It it was um, I forget, we were trying to figure out if there was a maintenance agreement between the Borough and the Port Authority. You know, nobody wanted to to maintain it, the Port Authority said it was the Borough, the Borough said it was the Port Authority. And I I tried, I actually worked with Lisa in a local, I forget it was, she had to contact a local political contact uh that was able to, you know, make some slight improvements, they improved the fencing around the playground. That's the only real community thing I've done to to help uh improve Swissville. Um, you know, I I am a homeowner, homeowner, my kids are young, you know, obviously, you know, enjoy the activities that uh the the mayor so kindly uh provides, like the uh the Easter egg hunt and the Halloween parade and whatnot, so I am an active community, community member. Um but out outside of just the sort of the regular, uh, you know, you you might see me on my morning jobs, that's about it, you know, I most of my 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 focus is, uh, you know, on my family, my kids' activities. And um and uh, you know, just uh doing doing my paid job, so so, yeah, I don't, I don't, I I don't I don't I don't have a ton of involvement with the the community, but um I uh, yeah, I like I like Swissville, and I like the downtownness of it, you know? Like I said, I used to walk to the East Busway sometimes at the Roslin Station, and uh, you know, I try to patron patronize some of the businesses as much as I can, certainly the Dairy Delight. And uh, yeah, so that that hopefully hopefully that helps answer the question.
You guys have a block captain on Black Block on your street.
Black Hawk Street.
Black.
It used to be uh my neighbor, uh Karen Hanchet, she was the block captain, and uh for years, although I don't know if she still is. Um, you know, there there's some folks that uh have been on the street, residents for a long time, I know most of the residents on my street. Um, so, yeah, they end up in the park, although I don't hang out ha- hang out at the pub uh too frequently, but um, yeah, I feel like I know most of my neighbors, at least on my block over there. Um, so, yeah.
Well, Mike, thank you so much for being here, are there any other council members that have any questions for him?
I I just wanted to say thank you for for offering and and volunteering your time, we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mister Mizer.
Uh so, Mike, we will uh, next week is when we would vote on uh the the appointment of this position, this is our agenda meeting, so there is a item J, we will discuss the appointment, uh I don't know how much we'll discuss, because this was kind of ju- it'll just be a follow-up to what uh you've just shared with us, but uh again, I echo the the sentiments, and thank you so much for applying, I'm glad that you did, I think you'll be great on that uh on that committee, and um we will let you know after the vote next week.
Excellent, thank you, thank you, Chris, thanks, everyone else, thanks for your question, and thank you for your time. Look look forward to hearing more.
Great. Okay, well, let's move on to our agenda items, so the first agenda item is item A, a presentation from Core Architects and L S S E Engineering concerning progress on the municipal building design.
Okay, Chris, I'll I'll take that. Um tonight, well, most of you, uh, most of you know me, I'm Ryan Pierce, Core Architects. Uh with me also tonight is Harley Pearson, Harley is the project manager and the lead designer on the project, and um and what what we'd like to accomplish tonight are a couple of things, first of all, we want to show you what we've done today, we want to catch you up on any changes to the um to the to the program and the floor plan that have happened since the last time you saw the building. And then we want to show you uh some images of the buildings, we're going to walk you around the three D model of the building. Uh we're gonna then review this, the budget and the schedule. And hopefully, at the end of that, you'll feel comfortable that we can move on, that you'll that you can authorize us to move on to the next phase of design, which is design development. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Harley and see if Harley can take control of the screen.
Ryan or Mister Pierce, can I interject real quick, just so that everyone knows that the design and schematics that we're going to see here, um the plan is to post them uh in the next couple of days on the Borough website with some additional narrative explanations of kind of what what it is, why why these rooms or why the 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 shape came out this way?
Yes. Okay, so um I'll ask Harley then to step up here, and um I don't know who needs to share the the screen here, um.
I should be able to do that.
Yeah, you're good to go.
All right, you got it.
Okay, thank you. Uh for everybody who hasn't met me yet, I'm Harley Pearson with Core Architects, um as Ryan said, project manager and lead designer on the project. Um so I'll share my screen, and I'll start off with the four plans that we have put together.
And just for the background of those who haven't been involved with the committee, because um eh the committee has been very involved for the last, oh, six months, really, actually, nine nine months um with this project, and the administrators have been involved in numerous meetings uh with Harley, and before that, Pete Shemansky with our firm and with me, uh refining this this floor plan, so um while this may be the first time that some on this call or will see it. The core group uh from Swissville Borough should be very comfortable or very um familiar with this plan, so go ahead, Harley.
Okay, I'll start everybody off with the upper level, which we're calling the first floor plan for the building. And it is the plan that contains the community, community room, the council council chambers, along with everything that's considered sort of a an assembly usage of the space. And then also the administrative offices for the Borough. So as you can see here, um one thing I don't have labeled here, but over here in this area is where an outdoor plaza is, and that'll make more sense once we can get into the model, I can show you everything that's going on. But the building is set up so that you have your your council chambers as a multipurpose room of as also.
Harley, can you orient them to to the streets uh so that they're com- they they understand?
Yeah, this is Braddock.
Where this is on the site.
This is the, so so this is Braddock Avenue out here, and Roslin is over over here. So there will be an outdoor plaza.
So the existing building sits pretty much right where the community center or the or the uh council chambers is on this drawing.
Yeah.
And if people notice those um that set of stairs at the bottom of the picture, those are stairs that would come out of the second floor of this building onto a sidewalk bordering South Braddock Avenue.
Yes, yeah, this would right right here where the 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 hand is, this is where the sidewalk on South Braddock would be.
So you're really looking at the second floor of the building?
Yeah. Yeah, we we have.
Well, let's call it the upper floor.
Yeah, and it's it's a matter of fact, this is the upper floor, either way, uh second floor, sure. From the plaza, there'd be an ADA accessible route to a security vestibule, and then a main lobby for the area, which you can communicate with anybody in the reception for administration, for anybody that needs to come into the reception suite. Uh this is, this is the or the administration suite, this is the administration here, which is basically just a collection of offices and uh support spaces, document archive, toilet rooms, conference room, stuff like that. Uh one one thing to make note of is the tax office, which was integrated into this design, so you guys can stop leasing space elsewhere outside of this building and have them housed within this building. One one thing I wanted to make clear is this council chambers and community rooms is is meant, and it's adjacent to the the outdoor plaza, so that it can be a multi-use indoor/outdoor space. Um you can get a lot of use out of it, if there's an event that would require outdoor activities and indoor activities. This becomes a very open and airy space that communicates well, both visually and physically with the plaza space. Um there's a kitchen here.
Um and just for um ju- just ju- if I could add something to that, Harley, um that room is all one level, there's no raised dais for the council um seating, uh that those are just tables arranged in in that space, and there's a storage room behind that where all that stuff is stored when you're using uh the community, right, using it as a community room, so it's a dual-purpose space.
Yeah, and this is the the storage room right now is shown to be able to, the the chairs would need to be stackable, but it it's shown right now to be sized appropriately, basically to be able to fit tables and all the chairs that are currently shown with on the plan. Uh there's also a kitchen space, uh well, from what we understand, the um the Borough wants this to be more of a warming kitchen, uh there won't actually be cooking there, but if anything is catered, this would all, this would allow the food to be warmed. Um some, maybe some minor residential-type cooking, boiling water and stuff like that, but not a full-on commercial kitchen, which kind of trips a lot of things that need to happen as far as building code goes. Uh we'd like to avoid that if possible, but once again, if you need a full-on kitchen, we can make sure that gets integrated. Uh also here is the conference, the caucus conference room. Uh which straddles both the council chambers and the main circulation space here. And within here is a stair that goes down to the lower level or the first floor, along with an elevator, and a collection of single-user toilet rooms. Um are there any questions about the first floor or second floor, upper level? Okay, with that, we'll go down to the the lower level, which is in majority, the police station. As this gets approached from public, there is a parking lot to the rear of the building. Um the you would approach into this vestibule here, and then a lobby um where you can be greeted by a reception slash duty officer here for the police department, where you can proceed up the stairs to the second floor. And everything that we just talked about here up there. Everything else down here is basically police department and some mechanical spaces and an electrical room. I'm not sure how much discussion there is to have about this, but uh incorporates everything the police department needed. Uh Sallyport and cells, uh squad room, offices, and locker rooms make up the majority of the space. Any questions about the lower level? Okay, um then what we can do is we can get to probably what everybody's waiting to see. Um the model that we have here is fairly preliminary, we put a lot of effort into.
Harley, can we look at the site? Can we look at the site plan first?
We can, um I I.
Is is that possible, because some of the stuff that they'll see on the elevations are in the site plan, and um that's not too much of a I didn't blow your sequencing too much, you're sorry.
No, I have it available here. I have, I'll sort of have a model in the model, so that's how I planned on showing you, but we can look at site plan here, and this will clarify some things as well.
Uh, thank you so much for asking me to show that, because I was looking for that.
Okay, so here is South Braddock and Roslin Street, here on the corner is the plot, proposed plaza. And building outline kind of gets a little lost in some of the other data here, but this is the outline of the building here. And parking lot down at the lower level. A proposed half-court basketball court. Um I don't, this isn't the newest one, this has been slightly reworked to be accessed more from down here. But for the most part, the layout is is the same, and then this is the police department, parking lot. I think this, some of this will look a little bit better when I get to the model, it seeing three dimensions and make, and it doesn't have a lot of the extra information on it. Does anybody have any questions about site plan? Okay. All right, we'll move to the model. Once again, this is preliminary, so there's a lot of work to being done to it, um but we're also here to uh get some good input. So this is corner of South Braddock and Braddock and Roslin. We approached, most of this building is using masonry as a finished material in the exterior. We have uh two masonry types, major masonry types, propose a um a smooth face or a round face concrete block, which is what you see in the whitish color. And then what we intend to do is match the as close as possible with some new brick. The existing, the the brick of the existing building. Um we also have some detailing around the windows that will also you know, be be derived from the existing buildings detailing, so try to keep that in back. But as you can see here, what is happening is this is the outdoor plaza. And a very transparent interface between the plaza and the community room and council chambers. So there can be some some really good events held here that utilize both of these spaces. As we come around the building. Now, these are two of the existing monuments on on the site. Uh we can get into further discussion about whether these are placed appropriately, or if we want to find other places for them right now, just preliminary, go at places that we can put them. This is the entrance to the kitchen, exterior entrance to the kitchen. So anybody that's catering can potentially simply park out here on the street and carry things up and into the kitchen from here. As you get to the rear, here's the entry to the police department. Which would also take you up the stairs into second floor or upper level. Uh just to give a little bit of a zoom out, once again, this is what we're looking at from a site plan perspective. What is basically a community lot, um main lot for the building, and then the parking lot for the police department over here. Half-court basketball court. This this is by and by no means a final layout for solar panels, and as as main, as part of the primary project, we'll be providing structural support for the solar panels, but there will be some work that I'll have to determine exactly how many solar panels are needed, and that's probably something that'll happen potentially with a third party, depending on how the Borough wants to approach that. But we want to show that this is a fair amount of solar panels you can get on this roof surface. Uh some of these may, like I said, the layout may not change, may not stay the exact same, some of these may have to move for rooftop equipment. Uh mainly ducts and vents and stuff like that. These three silver boxes are where we're hoping to put your main rooftop equipment as far as uh what you need for heating and ventilation. So those will be sort of in the uh the center portion between two, what can be considered two different buildings.
So Harley, this means when you say a a third party, this means that the design of the building would be so that solar panels can be added on the roof.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll be structurally prepared that for anything that, depending on a third party, or how how the Borough just decides to pursue the the structural panels or the solar panels, that they can basically be just attached to the roof without having to do any work afterwards. And I think one thing that we want to eventually get into, some of the stuff that I hint at here, is what kind of amenities or infrastructure does this site want with a building here, you know, I think like a a bike rack, or, you know, do we want multiple bike racks? Little things like that. Little things like that that get integrated. We, we should have a, a deeper discussion about what this plaza really means. And whether we want to just keep it as an open plaza and keep it flexible, or whether we start to integrate. Uh, a little bit more detail into it. For instance, here I just have some tables and chairs for people who might want to sit here and enjoy the day. It's pretty much a, a clean slate at this point. So we, we, we look forward to discussing it with everybody as, as far as how we really eventually put this plaza together. But primarily, we want to be able to communicate very well with the council chambers. Does anybody have any questions on the model? Any input for feedback?
I think, I think it looks great, uh, you know, just from a first glance. I, I, I know, you know, this is still a long, it's been a long time coming and it's still a long time. Coming, but it's exciting to see this progress and, and see what work's been put into it so far, so.
Our thoughts were to try to create a community space where, uh, maybe people could rent. Uh, the, uh, community room out for, uh, baby showers and things like that.
Yeah, you should be able to fill that purpose pretty well.
And I like how you, uh, were explaining to us earlier that you integrated the colors from the old Swistow High School of basically, um. Uh, blue and yellow.
Yeah, we were, we were definitely looking in for some influence to pick colors. Um, sometimes we just pick colors we like. It might not necessarily be grounded in anything. Everybody else might, might not like them, so. Uh, I, I, yeah, I drew these directly from the logo that's being used on the website, this blue and this yellow.
And I know, I know the goal also with the building was to, um. Try our best with costs, of course, in mind to incorporate the, the ads of the community. And that's so that basically it's a, a building that's mutually beneficial, not only for the borough to continue on its business. Um, his, it's business dealings such as like the police admin. But also is beneficial to the community so that there's a community space for community meetings. Uh, community gatherings, community activities. And then also still have a, a space where our children can, can also benefit from. So that's why we have the basketball court there as well. Um, and so. With the location of the building i- is, um, located closer to Woodstock area. Um, and that's an area that, that doesn't have a playground basically easily accessible. Um, so I know me as a parent. Being that there's a police department adjacent to a basketball court makes me feel like. A, a bit of safety with my child, uh, being out and about at a basketball court. But the goal was definitely to incorporate the, the, the ass of the community. So that the building is mutually beneficial for their community.
I know, I know space is at a premium and I, I have a follow-up question about space, but. To, to Miss Scale's point regarding, you know, having a playground in place for children, uh, and youth to gather. Would it be too much of an ask to have some sort of play, play, uh, like slide swings, playground equipment? Nearby, I know space is a premium, but. For younger children, you know, also to, to use the space.
Well, this site as it is.
Can you zoom out Harley? We can see the, the, the site from a, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can see the whole site.
Now, don't let this.
Can you sort of indicate where the, um. Property lines are.
Uh, the property lines generally run right about through here.
Okay.
To that triangle, that green triangle, is that, is that the borough's property there?
No, I don't, I don't believe it.
On the bottom?
No, it's not.
To, to, at the bottom of the, um, of the basketball court that, that you have shown.
No, it's shown.
The, the, the property lines basically run. Yeah, right, right, right to the bottom of the basketball court.
Right there.
The model's not all inclusive. There's actually some, like a stone garage and a two-story building down there that's not modeled. But yeah, unfortunately, no, we couldn't use that for a play area.
Okay, yeah, just, just something that. I, as, as a, a father of two young daughters, they, they won't be playing basketball for several years, so just thinking about things like that. But, um, can you give us any idea, the square footage of, of the actual building in comparison to what the square footage that we have for, with our current building?
The new building is approximately sixteen thousand one hundred square feet.
Okay.
And at sixteen thousand eighty, we're just rounding up to that sixteen thousand one hundred right now. I believe the existing building's about ten thousand.
Okay.
Two fifty, I want to say, is what we, uh, is what we have on file.
You add up all the garage space and everything else in the existing building, it's closer to. Almost seventeen thousand with all the square footage of the garage and the various nooks and crannies in it. Storage areas and such, but this building would be laid out so much better. Um, one hundred percent of it would be useful where currently we don't have that. Now, if you go back to look at the plans that we were looking at a year ago. Uh, this plan is, um, smaller than what we started out with, uh, uh, as a matter of trying to control costs. Uh, we, uh, kept, uh, trying to decrease the, uh, square footage.
That's true. We, we had, we had a separate community room and council chambers in that original program. Then one of the compromises that we made to the budget was combining those spaces. So there is a. If you, when, when you looked at that floor plan, I'm sure you could tell it's pretty efficient. I mean, there's not really any wasted space in there. There's nothing you could, um, not a lot of VE in terms of, of trying to make the building tighter. Uh, and, and we took the same approach on the elevations and on the aesthetic of the building. We tried to create something that was a combination of. Um, contemporary but paid homage to, um. You know, some of the character, the old building and, and the, and, you know, the history of the site. That's why we tried to pick up on the color of the brick, um, some more traditional detailing in the bricks on the brick side. And our goal would be to go with kind of a timeless look. Um, something that's not going to go out of style. And also, uh. The building had to, um. Had to transition on what is not a flat site. Uh, so we did have to account for the, you know, the drop in the site. I'm pretty pleased with the way that turned out in terms of being able to handle the slope.
I like that you'll literally be able to walk into the admin off the street. Without going up all those steps like we presently have.
There's a handicap accessible ramp, um. At that front entrance as well.
It'll, it'll basically.
Somebody in a wheelchair can come right in.
It, it's, it's really a flat surface from, from an up, from the upper part of the site here.
I, I think that's one thing that appeals most to me about this design is, uh. Structural elements and, uh, current state of our current building aside, it's not a very approachable building for the public. Um, before I was on council, I would often just stand outside the building trying to figure out. Where I was supposed to go or how to get in. And this is definitely a much more. Welcoming building, it, you know, it, with the plaza and, and, you know, the clear entrance, um, so.
Yes, it would be very inviting when you walk up on it and be able to know exactly where you're going. And knowing that you, you know, have all those different, say, if you did have to wait. You can hang out in the area and have a seat if you, a little bit earlier, you know what I mean? You can just kind of hang out in the front. I think this is beautiful. I think it's beautiful that the kids will have an opportunity to have. A building that they can also play at, also get to know that this is where their leadership, you know, is housed. And it can be something that can give them futuristic goals as well. Just not playing from that perspective, but to let them know, okay, so one day maybe you could be in the seat.
Bill, if you're trying to talk, you're muted.
I think it has a very nice street presence too, uh, for people that just happen to be driving through the community underway to Kennywood. You know, it's gonna give us a more modern, um, look.
Yeah, it'll definitely catch your eye. There'll be a big flag there, uh, right on the corner, um, and, uh. And, and that plaza is, forms a nice entry pre-function space. You know, for the building that sets it back a little bit off of the curb, uh, but it's up at the level of the intersection, which. You know, which will make it more visible. Okay, if there, are there any more comments on the, uh, on the model? We can always come back to it if you like, but I want to talk about the budget and the schedule and I don't want to use up your entire meeting tonight, so. Harley, can you bring up the, uh, budget? Okay, no, nobody who has bought gas or groceries in the last six months needs to be told that we've had a lot of inflation. In the last, uh, six to nine months. Um, and that's reflected in our building cost. Uh, we're using a number of two hundred seventy-five dollars a square foot for this building. You know, we are a little bit limited in terms of our ability to value engineer that. Because it has to be a durable building and has to have certain life safety and a certain, um, emergency management level of structural integrity. Uh, uh, so we feel comfortable with that number and that number has some inflation built into it. Um, so we're looking at the hard cost for this building of about five and a half million dollars. And then the contingencies, uh, which are, we carry a design contingency. That's the stuff that's not on the drawings yet. As that stuff goes on the drawings and design development, construction documents, that number will reduce down to zero. And, 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 and end up up in the top number. Uh, there's a contingency for change orders during construction. There's another escalation. That's an inflation number to the midpoint of construction, insurance bonds, um, and we come up with a. Total building construction cost of about six point three million. That's what you can expect on bid day. Then below the line are the soft costs. There's about another six hundred thousand in soft costs. That's basically fees. Uh, design fee, um. You know, your civil engineering fee, construction testing, the asbestos abatement design. Uh, drilling and soils investigations, and then some of the things that you need to do just to do the project, like advertise and print drawings and so on. Which brings the total project budget up to about six point eight eight million. And we feel comfortable, that's where you stand today. Now, the good news is we are seeing some. Um, easing of the inflation numbers and the construction cost numbers. Uh, we've seen certain building materials come down in cost over the last few months. So we may get, we may get a break on bid day. Market conditions may improve on this number. Uh, we've kind of, we kind of believe this is the worst case scenario at this point.
The question I have, um, Ryan. Um, is, and this is just me learning more about bids and change orders. Um, when you say this is the worst case scenario, is this also taken into consideration? If a bid comes in at a lower, lower price and then change orders happen throughout the construction phase? That basically increase what the price was initially?
Well, we have that number up in the upper number, uh, in the contingencies and soft costs. We have a, an allowance of about a hun- what was a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for potential change orders. If there are no change orders, you put that money in your pocket. So that's, uh, you know, that's factored into this, into this number. On a new building, we really shouldn't see change orders over three percent. In fact, we typically see change orders in the one. To one and a half to two percent range on our projects, so, um, that's a pretty generous number.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. Yeah, I do. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to express that I'm concerned about the rising cost of this. Obviously, some of it can of course be, um, you know, assigned to inflation, which none of us have gone without noticing. As you said, we of course have the same problem with our DPW renovation for the garage. But I am concerned because when we first started having this conversation. It was floated as a three million dollar conversation, then it became a five million dollar conversation. We got, um, fifty percent of the funding from a state R cap grant representing two point five million dollars. Um, based on a budget of five million dollars and now we're up, I mean, creeping towards seven. And I'm getting very concerned that we're having some scope creep. Um, and that, I mean, I had not seen these newest numbers until today. So I'm concerned that we're getting out of control here a little bit in terms of what our little borough is able to handle.
Well, let me take those, uh. Let me take the, break that apart a little bit. Um, I, I don't recall ever saying this was a three million dollar project. I do know that we talked about.
I do, I remember it. I was at the meeting.
I know that we talked about five million for construction costs. Um, and we have seen that increase to about six point two, six point three. Um, and I think that's twofold. Uh, one is the inflation. But the second part is the building has gotten a little bit bigger since then. Uh, I think we were talking about a fourteen thousand square foot building then. Uh, fourteen and a half perhaps, and now we're at about sixteen thousand, um, and. I, I wouldn't call that scope creep in terms of, well. I wouldn't call that. The building just didn't get fatter. Um, the actual program elements were added to the building. And, um, it was actually a little bigger before we value engineered out some of those other spaces. Uh, I have to apologize in advance for my noisy dog and nobody will help me here. But yeah, so we have seen a lot of increase, um. You know, the environment that we're in right now is, is a. Uh, and one of our rising prices, not lower prices.
I'm just quite wondering, I mean, I have not, but I'm not on the, the building committee. So I'm wondering if we need to do a little bit of trimming. Are there some nice to haves that maybe are not need to haves? I mean, we're a borough of just over nine thousand people. We did have to raise taxes mill already to account for some of these expenses. And we're going to be incurring substantial debt in order to pay for this building. So I am concerned that I don't want us to have things that are maybe just nice to haves that are not need to haves. Um, you know, part of the, the idea behind having movable chairs and tables and so forth. For the, um, for the, uh, council chamber space so that it could be used as a community room. Was for things to do double duty. So I'm wondering, you know, is the growth in the size of the building something that's necessary? Or is that a nice to have type of situation?
Well, hey, you know, I'll just say, on, on the flip side of things, uh, you know, I was. Uh, obviously nervous about this budget discussion to see where the number had gone to. Um, you know, I've mentioned on other council meetings, my wife is a structural engineer and deals in. These construction costs and building costs for these structures on a daily basis. And given the size of the building. You know, her, her feeling was that we're going to get close to the ten million dollar line at some point. Uh, you know, when all said and done. So for me to see it here sitting still at six, three, uh, was actually a relief. For me personally, just, just out of a sheer concern with, with the cost of materials and, and the cost when this goes out for bid. You know, uh. With, uh, uh, at least responding to what Abigail had to say, you know, I, I don't know. You know, where it, it sounds like it has increased in size a little bit. What, what were the additions that, that added to the size from the initial? Design.
Well, one of the additions that I can speak of is the tax office wasn't, wasn't initially in there. Um, and one thing we got to keep in mind is that it's a two-story building with basically two separate functions on each floor. Uh, so if you add two hundred square feet to the upper level, you're naturally going to add two hundred square feet to the lower. Uh so if you add two hundred square feet to the upper level, you're naturally going to add two hundred square feet to the lower level, which sometimes can be nice. But adding two hundred square feet to one level basically means you're adding four hundred square feet to the building. Um so that was. That was one of the ads that occurred.
And the reason that we added the tax offices, unlike most boroughs. We have been paying for rent for a tax office for generations in Swissville. And uh this eliminates that, we wanted to try to bring everything back in full house. And to the contrary, my recollection is that the building size has been. Uh decreasing. Over over months as as we tried to cut out any. Loose loose fat. As far as affordability, thankfully. Uh we have received a two and a half million dollar uh grant from uh the the Commonwealth. And uh because of the taxes being increased by one mil. Uh that will produce enough tax revenue to cover any debt service, uh Greg could probably speak to that. Uh better than I can as far as the specific numbers.
Yeah. Greg, before you do that. Not can I add, can I add one other thing that I that I know increased the size a little bit? The way we're handling the toilet rooms with individual toilet rooms rather than. Uh two gang toilet rooms, men's and women's. That has increased, that has added. I don't know, Harley, what do you think? Couple hundred square feet? Hundred fifty square feet?
Yeah, it's 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 not substantial, it kind of affects some of the layout that we had originally, but. It's it's it wasn't a substantial and. It's kind of tricky, if we had, if we needed more toilet rooms, it would it would. Increase significantly. Um but when you really need basically six toilet rooms, you can get away with not having a a high increase over a gang toilet layout. Um what it did do though was display some of the other spaces like the. Janitor closet and stuff like that, which sends some ripples through. Nothing severe.
Okay, I'm sorry I interrupted.
Oh, no problem, I know that like when we first started with this, we first started with. A design that basically had everything, you know, everything that the community. Um asked for in that initial meeting that was held with the community outlining the community's wishes. And then had everything that was, you know, ideal for uh our employees. And then we just started stripping away a a ton of stuff because. It's nice, like Abigail says, but our tiny municipality can't handle in terms of that cost. Um and so we just, we we we're continuously just stripping, stripping, stripping away. And my understanding is that where we're at now is like the the bare bones. Space just to have the the necessities and still include. Some of the wishes of the of the community, which is like the community, the dual community space, which is council chambers at the same time. But then also having the outside basketball court, so it's still. Of mutual beneficial use to the community and then with the the toilets is. Being in alignment with, you know, we're not going to go the whole male female bathroom, it's going to be a. A a bathroom accessible to anyone sort of uh designed. So I don't know, I'm all for cutting the fat and and making this as. Least expensive as possible, uh so it's it's not hitting the pockets of the residents. Uh so if there's it any opportunity to decrease the size. At all without losing the bare bone basics that we have now. Great. But my understanding is where we're at now is the result of us stripping away. All the wants and what's nice and what's great, because that is just. Outside our 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 pocket.
It's earlier than that, though, we had a one-floor plan, we and the very first plan I heard was. We're going to do a one-floor plan so that we don't have to pay for an elevator and all these other things that go along with it and it'll make it cheaper. Then all of a sudden it was two floors and then it got more and more expensive. And I am, I mean, I I've spoken with Mr. Bachi before about trying to decrease costs in the borough and we looked at the budget. Of renting that tax office, and don't get me wrong, I'm not crazy about the fact that the tax office is in a totally different part of town, I mean, it's not like it's far, but it's. You know, a different area from the borough building. And um I believe we figured out it costs about five thousand dollars a year to rent that office. So it's not like we're saving the equivalent of millions by putting the tax office in the new borough building. So I don't want to go crazy by saying that that's a big offset, but um Mr. Price had alluded to the fact that Mr. Bachi could talk. Us through. How the village was going to cover this. Debt service and so forth, and I'd like to hear more about that.
I will note, by the way, that the tax office is five thousand a year, only out of the generosity of the needs who rent it to the borough at a a below market cost. We're very fortunate that we've been able to rent a tax office that cheaply.
I I before Mr. Bachi, I just wanted clarification on on the restroom issue, so. The initial layout that we saw. Um showing the actual rooms and such, it seemed there were two separate areas where there were. Restrooms available, there was one section where there were two individual restrooms and then another section where it looked like there were. Six or seven individual restrooms. To the, to the point, yeah. To the point of uh what Ryan was saying is the cost, if we were to keep. T one, three and T one, four down there in the corridor as individual toilets, but then had your traditional. Men's and women's rooms. In that other area, would that cut down on a little bit of square footage and cost?
I was made to understand at our last meeting when I asked that similar type of question. That they the the reason we had the that many bathrooms had to do with the occupancy of the building. Cause I was like, can we cut out some bathrooms? Um so so that's what I was told.
Well, yeah. Mr. Mizer, the the T T one, three and or TI three and TI four not are not accessible by the public, that is inside the admin section, whereas those six at the top are just adjacent to the lobby.
Right, the the Allegheny County Plumbing Code dictates the number of fixtures that you need for men and for women. Based on the occupancy of the building, now you have an assembly occupancy. Because you have the community room slash council chambers. So that kit, that that drives a formula which determines how many fixtures you need, which is basically toilets and urinals. Obviously, if you put those in a row in gang toilets, it's more efficient from a space standpoint than individual rooms. But then you run into, if you're trying to achieve gender neutral. How do you designate those? Because the Allegheny County Plumbing Code does not recognize gender neutral, it recognizes men and women and you have to label them. Um at least for the purposes of your plan, maybe not your signage in the field, but your plan when you submit. But you know, we're not talking about. A million dollars here.
Yeah.
We're, if you, you know, if you're looking for. If you're looking for serious order of magnitude cost savings, you're not going to find it in the plan because this plan's pretty tight. The only place you're going to find order of magnitude cost savings is on the site. You don't have to do the plaza. You don't have to do the basketball court. That stuff could be simplified, that would take some cost out of the site design. Is that going to save you a million dollars? No. But it might save us, it'll save you in the six figures probably. The reality is that with this program, you know, you have to cut program function in order to make this building smaller. We've pretty much taken out everything that is not as what. What the borough considers essential programmatic services to operate the administration. The police department. And provide those one or two spaces for the public. Which are really shared spaces anyway. So um they're they're not, the the public's, the spaces put in for the public. That Mrs. Skip, Miss Gales talked about, they're not really adding. Very much area to this building.
I remember going back to when we first that discussed the possibility of having a one-story structure that this lot is not very conducive to that because it is so slope. And I believe that the architects had explained to us that there would have to be a uh either a huge retaining wall at one end. Or there would have to be uh the front of the building would have to be, um you know. Twenty feet below the level of South Braddock Avenue to go on one story and then we would lose all our parking. And one-story buildings aren't necessarily less expensive because that's uh twice the footers, that's uh twice the uh square footage of roof area that you have to have. Uh so that's why we thought that um or. Uh that going to uh two stories on this sloped site was uh most optimal. I love the plaza, I would hate to see that eliminated. And the basketball court, that was a trade-off because we didn't want to go to the expense of uh any kind of indoor gym facility.
It was also a trade-off because other than the multipurpose room. Um that exists, that was the only thing that. They answered the the request of the community, the community has also been asking for a space for the children. Basically to um play at and uh and go to specifically on that side of Swissville. Because as we all know, um our, the nearest community center is at Wilkins. That's not a very close location to the children that are on Woodstock, that are on the other end of Braddock Avenue. They're even on my my neck of the woods, Managua Hala. Uh so that was a. That was the whole compromise with having the half outside court. Um to have an additional space that the community has has actually asked for.
I know there were questions about the budget. Uh you know, Mr. Bachi, I'm happy to jump in and you can always correct me. If I'm saying anything uh that is factually inaccurate, but. In some sense, we've been waiting for this moment to have these particular numbers so that we could go to the bank with them. Uh we are in the process of scheduling a and. Uh a meeting with our representative of the bank to kind of get some understanding of what would our interest rate be, what are different term lengths of loans so that we could. Uh amateurize out, what would these payments look like? Uh what can we afford, what length of of, you know, mortgage, if you will, loan can we afford? Um you know, the the the, a couple of things to note about this is that uh we will be paying this uh out of pocket. For the full price that the R cap grant is a reimbursement. Uh so once we pay this, we can apply and receive that two point five million uh as reimbursement and then we can apply that two point five million. Two point five million to the uh principal of the loan, uh potentially get it re-amateurized to either lower our payments or lower the timeframe. Uh for that, so there are some options that we are looking at, I don't know that we have any concrete numbers of where that is, but. Uh our our plan uh is to do something that is uh within the. Uh economic confines of of that mill that we increased to to not extend beyond that, um so that that is the the intent. Um that is what what our commitment is to this at this point in time, so I'm I'm confident that. Uh we'll be able to get there, but I I I don't know that we have any concrete information, concrete numbers for that until we meet with the bank.
Thank goodness, we did get that two and a half million dollar grant and we're still going to be exploring other grant opportunities.
I'm just terrified now, I mean, Mr. Mizer mentioned ten million dollars and like I said, I've seen this creep. And I feel, I mean, I don't want to be rude, but I feel like I'm taking crazy pills every time we have a meeting about this because I distinctly have like notes. In notebooks and conversations about numbers and plans and then I'm told every time, that didn't happen. That we didn't talk about that, I was okay, but I mean, I'm worried that I'm going to show up to some meeting and somebody's going to say, oh, the new. Price is ten point three million dollars, I'm going to say, what happened to five and six and change, but it was never five, I don't remember that. So I'm very concerned that this is going to grow and grow and grow and grow. I mean, I don't know that we're hiring, uh it are there plans to hire a project manager? To oversee this, are we trying to be our own project manager, what's going on with that? Because I feel like that's another issue. That while it could cost money to hire someone, does that help keep the price from soaring? I don't know if it does or not. But I get concerned because the price keeps going up and up and up and up and up. And we're just not a giant community that can absorb these costs and when I hear we haven't quite figured it out. How, you know, how things are going to be amortized, how it's going to be paid for, I'm I'm very concerned.
Well, I've heard the figure of five million for, you know, about a year now being bantered around. Um but you know, if you had volunteered to be on the committee and if you you would attend the meetings that that we have, uh you would be more familiar with these numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Price, for that, I used to attend the committee meetings when I was uh council president, but I no longer have a seat on all of the committees anymore because Mr. Ansel. Made me the chair of community initiatives and that's what I do, so if four of us were to attend a meeting that would constitute a quorum, be from my understanding. Impermissible for me to attend in addition to the three who already sit on your committee. But thank you so much for your invitation to attend the committee meetings, I would love to hear the minutes from the committee meetings and have those to have an opportunity to review them, but to my understanding, it would be a violation of Pennsylvania law for me to attend and constitute a fourth member. And create a quorum at that meeting, so I think I'll have to decline that, thank you so much, though, for the invitation, I really do appreciate it. And I would like to hear from Mr. Bachi on those financial figures because I still haven't heard anything.
Yeah.
Uh Greg, is Greg here, can Greg?
I'm here, um I don't, I I can't give you numbers pers- exactly because I I wasn't expecting to give a presentation, so I have no resources in front of me. Um other than what I can see the budget, but from the discussion the other day that we had with Core. The total, I believe, is around six point eight million dollars, of which five to six hundred thousand would be paid through the tax increase, that'd be the architecture and the engineering fees. Um over the course of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Because the engineering effort, the the engineering and architecture also includes a project oversight. Um through the project, you know, to to completion. So that millage increase um is dedicated, we move. Eleven point one one percent. Of everything that Tom Bar turns over to us to the capital fund every every time he gives us a turnover. So that we have the money there to pay for these, you know, for these um for the engineering fees, because that represents what the tax increase. The the percentage of our millage is was the tax increase. So we moved that into the capital fund and we have that those funds available, so. The total at the end of the day is more like in the range of six point two to six point three million that we would have to finance. Um minus the two and a half million dollar grant from state, which would bring us down to about a three point eight. Uh million dollar, you know, and and then, you know, there's always going to be something that comes up, so I would guess at the end of the day. Uh we'll be financing about four million dollars and. Um looking at some amortization tables that I had, Vicky, Vicky is working on pulling some stuff together for me. Um but just some preliminary numbers, uh it seems like we will be able to pay for that within the confines of tax increase. Um the other that was dedicated for the debt service to the building. And as Mr. Ansel said, we are in the process of setting up a meeting with our bankers. Uh to talk to them to see, you know, what what term, what length of term we can go. Uh the best way to do this, whether it's a general obligation, no to bond issue or something else. Um we can, you know, so we, you know, hopefully we'll be meeting them within the next couple of weeks and we'll have some better idea of what the uh what the repayment will be. But if you just do a quick amortization. Uh through an amortization program, four million dollars over twenty years is two hundred thousand in principal. And then the uh the interest, depending on what the interest rate would put us up in the high two hundreds for a repayment. If we're able to take it out for thirty years, you know, you're looking at a hundred sixty-six thousand dollars as a principal payment. And so we might be in a quarter million dollar annual range on the on the payments, but that's just offhand with, you know, like off the top of my head with. You know, I don't have anything in front of me, but that's, we're going to be in about the four million dollar range would be my guess.
I I just one other thing I wanted to note and then I think I've spoken my piece for tonight, but um I just did some. Looking, one of our neighboring boroughs, obviously, and one that was used kind of as an example for this. Project was Forest Hills Borough, Forest Hills built their uh building in twenty seventeen. Uh at a cost of four point five million dollars, that building is twelve thousand square feet, so it is smaller. Uh than the proposed building that we're looking at, but with an inflation calculator looking at the cost of inflation. Uh something in the four point five million dollar range in twenty seventeen would now be roughly. something in the 4.5 million dollar range in 2017 would now be roughly in the 5.5 million dollar phase today. So I, you know, just, just putting that out there to show that it does seem that we're at least in the ballpark of what a neighboring, smaller borough did five years ago for their municipal building, so.
I, if I'm, I mean, I don't want to speak for her, but I think Patty DiMarco and council over there actually did a lot of their project management work with all of the very green initiatives that they had with geothermal and everything as well. I mean, I did just want to note that while it does sound as if the debt payments every year will be inside of the one-mill increase that we voted to implement. There was discussion, I recall, both on Facebook and in, in real life, if there's such a thing anymore, of is this mill going to be removed after the project is over? And I know some people talked about that and, you know, the standard belief is, of course, when you add a mill, you're never going to take it away, right? Once you start getting used to having that money, you're not going to get rid of it. But I do know that there was some discussion of, once we get through this project, are we going to reduce that by a mill? And I think it's just fair to tell the community, no, the answer is no, because that's the money that we're going to be using for debt service.
Well, that's what I said when we had that discussion during a long time ago. But I do agree with what you said, that, that, that we have seen the prices increase. You, you aren't crazy in that one. We did. There have been a lot of changes that have, that have gone up, relatively speaking. And sometimes it's a little difficult to follow on the numbers because I think there's one set of numbers that tells you one thing, but then, you know, there's these built-in extra costs that kind of come into it also. And, and you're right, I do see a little bit of project creep. But I think that we have to look at how to, you know, as we take a look at the, at diagrams and we take a look at everything, we really need to sit and, and think about what's going to work the best in terms of what we can afford. That is something that we, we definitely need to do. And in terms of Forest Hills, Patty DiMarco, of course, they were able, they, they did have two people who were very knowledgeable about architecture and engineering who had just happened to be on council. And so they helped to, to project manage it. But Patty DiMarco did say that if she had to do it all over again, because she said they had to be on top of everything. It was constant pushback with the price, constantly, constant pushback with whether or not there would be changes constantly. And she said that if she had to do it again, she would absolutely get a project manager because it's more than worth the cost. Because as council president and one of the council members, they spent up team, and as you know, as, as council members, unpaid hours, you know, trying to wrangle and manage the project. So we definitely have to make sure that we keep on top of the price. We can't just say, oh, that's the price that's presented to us and that's the one we're going to go with. We have to ask questions and, and see where we can, where we can cut any fat. Although, you know, we've been cutting, we have definitely been cutting. So, but it always, it, it, it always behooves us to think about how much money we actually have and to remember that we don't have an unlimited amount of money. I thought that when we got that, that, that money from that, what is it, 2.5 million, $2 million? I thought when we got that money, that wow, it was going to offset this and make it lower. And it seems like it's gone higher. Whatever money we got seems to have been added on to the price for some strange reason. I don't know how that happened, but. So it, it, it does behoove all of us to make sure we're paying attention to the cost and paying attention to the little things. And maybe we do need to go back and, and, you know, look a little bit at, you know, at some of the spaces that we have relative. But we weren't looking, right? But, you know, one of the things that you do is when you get more eyes on it, you're able to take an even fresher look at something. And, and in addition, you know, I do believe that it's very important for us to be deliberative about this. Because we only really get one shot. Right? Once things are set, they're set. And I also understand that, of course, you know, one of the motivating factors is trying to get, I don't know, sometime, some type of loan agreement in place before the Fed raises the rates even higher. So we, hopefully, we were taking all of this into consideration because it's a lot that we have to keep in mind as, as we go through this.
And just a little bit of background, just from being a part of this process on the building committee. Prior to the new year, Abigail, when you switched, when you were no longer council president, as you say, you did have the opportunity to come to the meetings. So, and just let me know if I'm incorrect, in terms of the layout. Prior to the change, the layout, it, it had the same things. The, what's different is the tax bill, the tax office, the basketball court. That's different in terms of where the layout was preliminarily at the time that you were able to come to the, the meetings up until now. Because, because you were very helpful in terms of trimming the fat. Like when we looked at everything, we were like, okay, great, has everything everybody would want? But this is going to cost way too much money. Let's start trimming a whole lot of stuff so that we can get this cost down as much as possible. Now, the design layout from the time that you had the opportunity to come to the meetings up until now, what's different is the tax office and the, the basketball court. So, I mean.
I love the basketball court. I wanted to say, you know, I know that was your initiative and I like that a lot.
Well, that was, I think that was more so me coming, going back and thinking about what the community's been asking for. And it's like, okay, what I don't want to happen with the borough building is the same thing that happened with Collingwood Park. You know, we have this borough building put together and then we have a lot of folks that are teed off because the borough building does not incorporate the wishes of the community. And so, you know, that's why, you know, that, that is, that was a suggestion of mine. And Bill was very helpful with that in terms of using the space that we do have, but what we can afford to be mutually beneficial to the community. So just in terms of background, just to let you know, in terms of changes with that layout from the time that you had the opportunity to come to the meetings up until today. The changes are those two things. I'm equally concerned, especially Josh throwing out there $10 million, you know, in terms of what costs are coming and just having the, the little bit of understanding I, I have with these change orders and with interest rates. I'm just trying to wonder, is there any kind of way we can put caps on where the price cannot exceed? So that we don't run into, to that issue. Because I know another issue associated with the fact that we don't have any hard numbers is we first wanted to continue to put together a design that makes sense, that incorporates needs and some of the wishes of the community that we can afford. And then look at realistically what the numbers would be based upon that model. And so I know the longer we continue to wait, the issue we then run against is interest rates. You know, are they going to be the same six months from now versus one month from now?
Bill, I see you have your hand up. Why don't you go ahead and then let's, there have been a lot of comments about this. All of that stuff, I think, has been noted between us. Let's continue the presentation so they can, they can finish off with the timeline.
Yeah, I, I would just say, we need a new building. The old one partially collapsed. Certainly, if we had been in the position to build a building in 2017 when Forest Hills did, it would be cheaper than it is now. Five years from now, it's going to be a lot more than it is now. Right now, you know, the prices have gone up because of all these supply chain issues and inflation. And, and now the cost of borrowing money has increased. And, you know, we, we really can't sit on this much longer. We, we have to get something in the tubes and, and done because otherwise we're just going to be chasing inflation.
Thanks, Bill.
Can I make a, a couple, a couple of comments here?
Sure.
First of all, I want to kind of close this gap between the perception of where the budget was and where the budget is and how it got there. I think, you know, Abigail is right. We did talk about a number of 5 million and that was back at the end of the study phase. That was based on a much more conceptual program for, we really drilled down, started schematic design and drilled down into the, into the, what spaces we're going to be in this building. And then we did that, and the building was very big, much bigger. Which, but, but there was never a doll, you guys never saw a budget associated with that much bigger building. Because we always knew that that was probably outside of your range of being able to afford to fund the project. So as a team, working with the committee, we did make the building smaller. And that's Bill and Mrs. Gels, or Miss Gels' recollection of how we've been grinding on getting this building smaller. But what you know, you guys never saw a number that was associated with that larger program that we all knew we could never afford. So that's why there's a perception here that this budget has grown and that's true. And there's a perception here that we VE'd and made the building smaller, and that's true, too. The gap is, we never showed you a number from that, that other, we never showed you that other number. The second thing I want to point out is this. We're still in, we just finished schematic design. We're still operating on a dollar per square foot estimating model here. The next estimate that you see will be what we call a material takeoff estimate, where our professional, our professional estimator will actually go in and take off all of the systems and the materials in the building and create a much more detailed estimate. That's the point at which I think, you know, if that number is still not unpalatable, then that's the tool that we use to begin to try to value engineer. I mean, there's really not a lot you can do with this level of estimating other than take major components out of the building. So, you know, I think as we go into design development, we'll get a little bit, we'll get a lot more detail in the estimate. We'll be able to make educated decisions on, you know, or, or offer you alternatives that might be able to make the buildings less expensive. I hope that closes a little bit of the gap because I, there was a perception, you know, perception that this is growing in cost, that's true. And a perception that we've been working to make it smaller and less expensive and that, that's true, too. So.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Let's move on to the, to the schedule, Harley, if you could put that up, please.
Is that readable for everybody? Or should I zoom into?
A, a little bit bigger?
Yeah, let's start with the bottom line, which is right now we're looking at a, assuming that we can continue moving, which means authorizing us to continue with design development. And we work through the budget and you work through your financing and you can align those things. Assuming that we continue to move on schedule. We're looking at completion of the building in late, in early spring of 2024. That, that includes a 12-month construction period, which is as aggressive as we can possibly propose, given the supply chain issues and the fact that contractors just don't know what they're not going to get. And the labor shortages and all the other issues in the economy right now. Those could be better by then, but right now we have to go based on what we know now. This is also based on a fast-track approach to the abatement and demolition of the existing building. So the plan would be to move forward in the next couple of months with development of the abatement and demolition specs, putting those out to bid and then beginning abatement and demolition in December. So that by the time this building was bid in the spring, we could break ground as, as soon as the ground thaws and we would have a prepared site without the existing building there. If we can't fast-track this, if we, if you're not comfortable doing the abatement and demolition ahead of the main building, then you have to add a couple of months on to the schedule. Because our goal would have been to get rid of the existing building while we're still finishing the drawings and bidding the project. And that's what the schedule is based on. We can go into any specific details if you'd like, but.
I, I just have one question about that fast-tracking and, you know, I, I don't necessarily want this to go into another long discussion. But if, if we would fast-track and do the demolition immediately, has the building committee already discussed, you know, how we would handle temporary placement of borough employees slash police department when, while we have no building at all?
We're working.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
That's going to be an issue to be addressed eventually regardless because, you know, we are building on the site where the existing building is. So in this schedule, that would just be accelerated a few months. Yeah, but, but one, I, I, I don't think that you're in a position, based on the discussion I heard tonight. I don't think you're in a position to authorize the fast-tracking of the abatement and demolition until you've had those discussions with your financing people and, and you know that you can finance a project in this order of magnitude. Just because, once you tear down the building, there's no going back. Although, all of that said, the buildings, the existing building's not tenable long-term. So. Any questions on the schedule?
Thank you for the schedule, but yeah, I agree with you. The, the schedule is subject to change because we're not in any sort of position. I don't think we'll even be in the position by next week to make it, make that decision regarding the demolition of the building and everything else.
And, and that decision probably doesn't have to happen next week. You know, we have some time on that decision. This is a very aggressive schedule that Harley's done for the abatement and the demolition. And we could proceed with developing the abatement and demolition specs. We don't have to put it out to bid. You know, we could always incorporate it into the main project at some point. You know, if you decided to do that later. So, you know, if it takes a couple of months for you to make that decision, you haven't lost anything. You haven't, you know, spent any money that you're, you know, wouldn't have otherwise spent.
Brian, could you please make a, explain to council what it is you are seeking next week? That you're asking for approval to move to the design development stage and what that means?
Yes, yes. That basically means that this building, this floor plan, this, you know, the, the imagery, the elevations, and to some degree, the budget are acceptable enough to proceed into design development and refine those. You know, obviously, we're not going to make anything bigger. We're going to try not to make it any more expensive. But at the end of design development, there's a lot more information to estimate and to begin to make further decisions. So we're asking you, based on what you've seen tonight, can we continue moving with the project? That's the, that's the decision that, that we need from you.
So just to clarify, that's what we'll be voting on next week.
Yes, and I, I think I told you guys numerous times throughout the process, and I know I told the public this as well in a couple of the, in the workshop that we did, that you would have an opportunity at the end of each phase to make the decision whether to keep going. You would never get so far down the road that, that you would feel like you went barreling past a decision point or a point at which you have no return.
So just hearing.
So that's what we're asking.
Just hearing some of the feedback that we're, we're receiving just from fellow council members, it's apparent to me that, you know, for one, we got to digest these numbers and digest whatever the associated financing, uh, associated with these numbers. And if the, the grant and the mill and everything that we've done is going to be sufficient, basically, to cover, cover the cost. So understanding the feedback that we're receiving from council that then leads me to want to follow up and do maybe another in-person. Uh, maybe another um in person slash Zoom sort of. Uh, meeting with the public similar to what we did. Initially. To go over these that design aspects and get the the input of the public as well. Uh, cuz essentially it's going to be all of us who lives here. That are going to take the hit financially to cover the overall cost for this building. And it needs to be something that we we can all digest comfortably. We all know we need this building. And I hate slow down the process anymore. I know we've been waiting forever for this to happen. And unfortunately, since. I've been elected, we dealt with the the partial collapse of a building, uh, the roof caving in. And this entire time, our employees have had to work in those conditions. So I. I wholeheartedly understand the the conditions that folks are working in. I hate to continue to slow down this process, but. I'm gonna continue to reiterate, I don't wanna run into another Collinwood Park scenario that. Collinwood Park is nice, is new. But the community members that would ask that were asking for it felt shysted. Because it didn't include their feedback, it didn't include their voices, so that they felt like they had. A voice in the overall design of the park. So it was a new park, which is what they asked for, but. Their feedback in terms of what they wanted in that that new part. Wasn't received basically. And there was not even any sort of discussion as to why we why we couldn't incorporate some of the things that they wanted. So my ask is that maybe we do something similar to what we did initially. Again, now that we have a design together, now that we have layout together. To just have a. Follow up chat with the community, like, hey, what do you guys think?
Salisbury, you have your hand up. Ms. Salisbury's had her hand up for a few minutes.
Um, and I'm sorry, because I know you wanted to move on, but I just wanted to say, um, I I'm the only one on council, some. I used to be the new person on council and somehow I'm the old person on council now. So I'm the only one who's around when we went through the iteration of let's build the new borough building across from the fire hall. And I remember that the community at that time was livid. That Clyde Wilhelm was going to act as essentially our in-house project manager for it. Because people felt that, you know, we were not qualified as borough employees and electeds. To engage in a project of that nature. Now, that was just a adaptive reuse of an existing building. This is starting from scratch. And I understand that we have, you know, a committee that was formed to bring in people from the community. However, I'm an attorney, I'm not a construction expert, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect, I'm not any of these things. I'm not a project manager. I just wanna say that I'm not, you know, I don't wanna rock up to the meeting next week if this is on the agenda and say. I refuse to vote on this unless we have a project manager. I think it's better to put that out there now, but I think that that's something we need to have. I mean, when. Ms. Alfonso Wells pointed out that. Uh, Patty DeMarco over in Forest Hills herself, who sort of acted as a de facto project manager, says she wishes that they had had a project manager. I think we need one. I just think that we are being hit with so many infrastructure repairs and construction projects right now. I mean, we have the DPW building. We have our own borough building. We're going to have to deal with the Washington Avenue Bridge. We just have one thing after another, after another. I'm just waiting for the next thing to fall down that we have to do. That's like a multimillion dollar once in a hundred years repair. So um, I just think that we have to have somebody who. Can professionally handle this. I mean, we, this is not our full-time job and I don't know that any of us is qualified to really. Try to act as a project manager for this. And I just remember how. Upset people were even when a borough employee was going to act as a project manager, let alone, you know, a group of elected officials trying to kind of do their best.
Would do, does anybody know what the like the typical cost is? Because I I honestly, I actually agree with. Um, it's all this very in terms of a project manager. I've been a part of. Uh, construction sort of. Ventures and there was a project manager involved and I I actually was grateful for that because as she says, I'm an attorney. Yeah, I deal with real estate. But I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer. And so to have somebody that had that insight. And basically was a. A project manager on my behalf, not on behalf of. The company that was construct doing the construction was beneficial for to me because that person had insight. And intel that I did not have. Um, so I would love to see a project manager. Um, I I know that we are fully staffed now in terms of. Greg doesn't have to do everything, but he's still the borough manager and he's not an architect. Nor engineer either. So I I would love to see a project manager. I'm just wondering what is the. Going rate and overall cost for that? And then is that something? We can digest. In addition to these numbers that we're seeing. Just for the overall project.
I think Mr. Bachi had said at one point, it was like a percent. Of the total or something.
Sorry, say that again, Abigail. I didn't hear what you just said.
I I vaguely remember Mr. Bachi saying it was something like a percent of the budget.
Now, that was the engineering would be a percent of the budget. The project managers typically charge by the hour.
Yeah, there's a couple ways you could do it. If you hire a firm. You're gonna be looking at a. Between one and three percent, probably one and a half to three percent. If you hire an individual. Yeah, it's a six-figure, it's probably a six-figure cost, but it's probably low, six-figure.
Uh, Mr. Price.
Depends on what scope. It depends on what scope you're looking for them to. To um, affect if you if you just want them to be your owner's rep. Which means basically they go to the meetings, they report back to the administration and to the council. You know, they they provide their expertise in 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 evaluating. The design, um, the bids, uh, change orders. Construction decisions and things like that. If that's all you're looking for. You know, that's that's one scope. Uh, if you're looking for onsite project representation on a daily basis, then that's quite a difference.
My understanding is the owner's rep will be beneficial for us. With this overall project.
So I'd like to give Ms. Alfonso Wells a chance to speak. She's had her hand up for a while.
I had to find my mouse, sorry. Um, so I think that, um, yes, of course, I do believe that that is something we should do to have a project. Manager, but. In the meantime, we have to move a little bit forward in terms of being able to get the loan. Before the rates go up. So that two separate parts of this, the only thing. Who will be agreeing to. Is so that we have an outline that's good enough for the bank, right? That doesn't mean we're agreeing to all the numbers or anything like that. It means that we have a project we can take to the bank. So all we need, I mean, literally, we can have everything else that we've talked about and do. Every single thing else that we've talked about, but we just need to make sure this can go to the bank that that literally with these. This is not the final design. These are not the final numbers. So we just need to make sure this goes to the bank. Now, before our Fed chair gets back up there and says, hey, we're gonna raise it a little more. I mean, that that's it. There's nothing in this that says that we're going to go through with it. We're gonna do it. We can have the discussion with the with the community. We can do all of that stuff, but we just, we just need to make sure we get, we allow. Greg and Chris to get to the bank to start the process of getting the money started. So that we can at least know what the rates are gonna be. Otherwise, we're we're gonna be very, very behind. Like I said. We we can take the time to discuss all the other stuff, but I do understand that if we don't get started on this tiny part. Which has nothing to do with whether or not we agree with everything that's in here. It is a um, it is literally a draft. That we can use to go to the bank to get the funding, which we probably need to get started on.
I'm comfortable with that. I understand that. But what I also understand is from what Greg has said on numerous occasions, that once we. Say yes to at a certain point. Uh, preliminarily, like we're starting to borrow building. There's no turning back. So yes, let's do whatever is necessary so that we can sit down and talk to the bank because these interest rates are growing up. And we don't wanna turn around back and look and see, oh crap, this is gonna be eight million dollars, nine million dollars or ten million dollars. Because we're continuing to wait just to do that part. But I don't want to say yes to whatever phase that is that Greg has said that you say yes to. And it's like, okay, you're stuck to this. You're, this is what you're stuck to. Without doing what I suggested is that we do another sit down with the community like we did preliminarily. Before we even got to this point, now that we have a preliminary design and everything else. So that we can also discuss with the community this design.
And can I just clarify that with the bank, you know, Chris and I are going to, and and Chris and I and Vicky are going to continue forward. Regardless of what your decision is right now to get, you know, to talk to the bank and talk about our financing options. But until we actually approve at a council meeting, the borrowing and actually sign the paperwork. That is when the that is when the rate locks in. So. I mean, if that's six months from now and and if we delay this another month, it could be seven months from now. It's that's when that's when the rate is. It's not today. It's not when we get to the bank. Going to the bank and talking to them does not guarantee, does not lock us into anything. And this skills, just to clarify too, with what I was saying is. The what core is asking for is the authorization to move forward. We can stop them at any time in the plan. It doesn't obligate us to build the borough building until we actually bid it out and award contracts. That's the only obligation. We're not, and we're nowhere near that. But I just don't wanna scare anybody. Think we're we're signing on by saying yes next week if we do or don't. We're not signing on to anything other than moving to the next phase of the of the design development, so. But it sounds like we wanted.
Let me also. Um, and you know. Let me add to that, Greg. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you. But I wanted to add to what you said. I I think that now is a very appropriate time for you to start those discussions with the bank in terms of.
That's what I just said, we are not stopping.
Our discussion. Now is the right time for that, but you don't, but I would caution, and I I know you just said that you're not gonna do this, but I just wanna make it clear. I would caution not to actually borrow the money until you're at least through design development. And you have a higher level of estimate. So so now's a good time to get an idea what the lay of the land is, uh, but you won't close on any kind of financing till. At least the end of design development, probably at some point during construction documents.
And just to make sure I understand, Mr. Pierce, the reason for that is. Because you have a clear. Later on in the, you have a clear number of what the true number will be. That you would need to acquire that financing for. Is that why you would wanna hold off on actually borrowing?
Well, yes, because think about this, like if you think about polling in an election. Polling in an election a month before the election is much more accurate than polling nine months or a year before. Um, we're we're like nine months. In in equivalent time. From this, so you know, the these numbers could be. You know, there's a there's a range and and that range of um, our margin of error will get tighter as we get further through the through the design. So that's why I would, I would say now is not an appropriate time to borrow the money. Plus, we don't know what's gonna happen in the economy. You then really don't. Things could get better, things could get worse.
As a as a matter of transparency, and if you can share this in our current market and current economy, what is that margin of error currently?
It's probably ten percent on either side. And it should be much tighter than that at the end of design development, much, much, much tighter than that when we do our fifty percent CD estimate.
But I think that's also.
You know, that that's a swag.
But I think that's also why it's important for us to keep this project moving forward, because if we wait a month, uh, you know. We aren't any closer to narrowing that that. You know, room for error uh, down any because we haven't given authority to kind of keep going uh, to keep designing. I mean, I think that this has. I know that this is the first time that some individuals have seen this. Um, you know, like I said, we're gonna be putting this online. We're gonna have this for individuals to weigh in, but this has been very, very well thought out, both by core and by the building committee, by. Uh, members of the staff to do, to 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 listen to what the community had said that they want. Uh, you've heard that multiple times tonight. Uh, from both Miss Gales, Mr. Price, others that taking things to the community, they heard the community wanted and finding ways to to uh, at in. Include them in this kind of design schematic. And so now we're getting to the point where we can. Okay, let's 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 work out what this would look like with, uh, again, I'm not an an architect or an engineer, but uh, with all the the bells and whistles of that. And that's, again, I heard Mr. Pierce, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard you say that there's kind of an, you've already value engineered the schematic. Now there's another value engineering point when it comes to building materials. Uh, you know, what what kind of face you want on the on the the building. Um, there are other places where we can uh, gi- give and take. That that particular number a bit.
Yes, right now we're using dollar per square foot numbers for mechanical or electrical plumbing. Um, we'll have actual estimates on those at the end of design development. Those are also areas where you can sometimes save some money. And I wanted to comment too on the. Presentation to the public. I'd be more than happy to do another public presentation. Yeah, that's appropriate during the design development phase. To show that to the public and and have a Q and A. Uh, we could do that online or we could do it in person.
Thank you so much, because I mean, I can talk to members of the community all day, but there are just certain things about the design that. You are more equipped to, you know, answer than me, although I've sat in all the meetings. I'm, I still. Don't have full confidence to answer all the nitty gritty details. So thank you so much for making yourself available to do that. Because I think that's truly gonna be beneficial for us with this overall uh, building of this, the the borough building.
Let me, let me just make sure though, you said, Mr. Pierce, that would be during the design development phase, so we still need to move forward from where we are before we get to that point.
You could do it with what you have now. I I'd prefer to be a little further down the road. You know, we could do that while we're developing, while we're advancing the drawings during design development. You do need to be aware of this, though. If you look at that bottom line number, which is item forty one on this uh, on this schedule, which is. Substantial completion date. Three twenty six twenty four. This is a, this schedule is already very aggressive. So there isn't any, there isn't much float in here. There's a little, but there isn't much. So if you delay a month, that pushes a month. If you delay two months, that pushes a month. Cause it, cause there's not any makeup. In, you know, there's nowhere to make it up in the schedule. So I just want everybody to be aware of that.
At what point can we include your owner's rep with this? With this project?
Well, see, I I mean, if you're serious about hiring an owner's rep, I'd start that that hiring process right now because it may take you a month even to. To find the right person. And then that person could come in during the design development phase and and begin to contribute.
So felt my fellow council members. Um, what are your thoughts on that, that we do want to first? See the the true numbers of what the uh, cost would be for owners rep? And then put out uh. The job that well, I guess the big, right, for this job? Or do you want to put out the bid for the job, see what the costs are coming in at before you even start in interviewing for the position? What are your thoughts?
I, you know, I. I I think looking into a project engineer is good, but I had heard some talk earlier, like we don't take another step until that's completed. And I I don't agree with that. I I think we need to keep moving forward in some capacity. While simultaneously pursuing that. Um, and and I think we need to start pursuing that immediately. Given the timeframe it will take, but I I don't. You know. I I just don't wanna see more and more things coming in that go, well, we gotta hang up this another month. We'll push this to next month. We'll push this to next month. Cause each one of those months is where people are continuing to have to work in our current building, which is not. A a a safe place for for long-term occupancy. Um, and and this this project has been stalled and. Um, and, and this, this project has been stalled and delayed enough. So, yeah, I, I'm all for us looking into a project engineer, um, or a project manager. Um, and finding out what those costs are going to be and, and finding if we can fit that into the, the entire project, but. I, I'm fully in favor of, of moving forward with the project in the meantime.
Can I add some? Can I add something to that? Um, I'd be willing to help you guys define the scope of what that project manager is going to do. Because I think that's where you should start. If I was sitting in your chair, what I would do is first. Write down a list of all the tasks you want that person to do. Um, use that to develop a job description. And then actually put it out as an advertisement and, um. See what kind of response you get. Um, based on whatever that is, I may be able to recommend some people I know, um, certainly. You know, others may know some people. Uh, but that's where I would start is define what that job description is because. Then you're going to get a wide range of responses depending on how you define what this project manager is going to do.
Mr. Berlin, go ahead.
Yes, um, I agree wholeheartedly with Josh just said. Um, I understand we're concerned about the structure of the building and the cause, but my concern is the people in that building. That if anything continues to go on, we don't know the safety factor in that building right now as it stands. And I would hate for something to happen while those people are in there. So we need to move as quickly as we need to still be seamless. With whatever we need to do to get a prop, a property manager in place, but. I don't think it's hard to, you know, to be decide that we should continue to move on with this process.
Bill, go ahead.
Uh, I wanted to ask Ryan, uh, what he thought. Maybe a range might be for project manager. Do you think it'd be like a hundred thousand or what do you think it would cost us?
If you hired an individual, that sounds like the number I was going to put out there. It's probably about a hundred grand.
And could we, do you, do you think that it would be likely that we could have more than a hundred thousand in savings? By using a project manager?
Depends on where you think you might find the savings. Certainly it would. It would make the project much more efficient. You'd have far fewer headaches. You may render decisions in a more timely manner, and that might save you a little bit of money at some point. If you're talking about bringing in a construction manager level person, somebody that's going to do constructibility review, value engineering. Even estimate check. That's going to be more than a hundred thousand dollars. That's a construction manager. Uh, that person might save you more money. But you're going to spend more to get them. I, I did have in previous estimates, a line item for a construction manager. I took it out because one of the things that Greg and I have discussed. Is the possibility of getting a waiver from the separations act so that we could bid this as a single prime contract. And, um. If you did that. You know, it becomes a lot easier to manage the contractors during construction. I mean, you know, that's pretty much falls under our construction administration duties. That, that you own per our contract. Where it helps to have a project manager or a construction manager is when you have multiple primes, general electrical plumbing, um, HVAC. Required typically on public bid projects by the, the separations act. So, um. So that's why I think it's important to figure out what exactly you want this person to do. Um, and that, so that's a hard question to answer, Bill. I, I don't know if I answered it or. Sorry.
Thank you.
All right, um, I, let's move on. Uh, I.
Is this an agenda item for next week?
Yes, I, I mean, I think this should be on the agenda for us to, to vote on. I think there's, uh, been enough council members who have, I mean, there's been a lot of, uh, both positive and concerns. Um, shared about this. So I think that this should be on the agenda so that we can. Uh, at least leave it open for us to continue to move, to, to give core permission to move forward on this process.
Okay. So if you're finished with us, then, uh, thank you all very much for giving me two hours of your valuable time tonight. We'll talk to you later.
Great. Thank you very much for all of your time and, and, uh, your presentations.
Thank you for your patience with us.
Oh, no, you're, you're the client. We asked for you to be patient with us. Good night, everybody. Have a good rest of your meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. So we are on item B, uh, discuss the creation of a public work superintendent position and the appointment of an individual to serve in that position. Mr. Bachi.
We discussed this last month and we had tabled it because, uh, we hadn't come to an agreement with the wage with the teamsters union. We have come to an agreement, which, uh, we discussed in executive session. Um, a few weeks ago, so now would be the time we can go ahead and put this on the agenda. It'll be two agenda items, one to create the position. And, uh, based on the job description that was circulated and one to appoint an individual to serve in that position.
Any comments or questions from council?
The only question I have is I know they, and this may be like duh, Weldy, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What we're doing in terms of this superintendent position for TPW, we're not violating any sort of terms with the union or union rules, correct?
No, we negotiated with the union.
Okay.
The union's been a part of this and we negotiated the job description with them and the wage for it. So they've agreed to the wage. They've agreed to the job description. So we are. We're, we're fine.
Okay.
Great. So that'll be on the agenda to vote on next, uh, at next week's meeting. All right. Item C, discuss the promotion of an individual to the position of sergeant. Mr. Bachi.
Um, the civil service commission administered a written exam to sergeant candidates. Those who applied, two of them passed. Um, both of them had an oral examination. Between, before a board of chiefs, both, both of them scored successfully on that. And then there were two rounds of interviews conducted by council for the promotion to sergeant. And, uh, we can, I, I think we're at the end of the process. Uh, we can, we're at a point now to appoint someone at next week's meeting.
Any comments or questions from council? Great. So that'll be on the agenda next week to vote on. Uh, item D, discuss an ordinance to extend the life of the Wilkinsburg Penn Joint Water Authority.
The Wilkinsburg Penn Joint Water Authority, um, is, is in the process of doing some long-term borrowing for system upgrades. And the term of the loan that they want to take the loan or bond issue that they're doing actually exceeds the length of the, um, life of the authority that was. The, that was in place since I believe the nineteen fifties. So the authority is asking all the charter members, which Swissville is one of the charter members who have a vote. And actually, you know, to create the authority or dissolve it, um, they're asking the borough to, um, pass an ordinance to extend the life of the, um. Of the Wilkinsburg Penn Joint Water Authority by fifty years and it'd be fifty years from the date. Of the resolution by Wilkes-Pen Joint at, at one of their future board meetings, but they need all of the, um. Um, charter members to vote, to pass an ordinance first before they can pass their resolution.
If I extend the life of the water company, will my bills go down? I don't think so. It's so, it's so painful to extend the life of the company. That keeps raising my prices, but I guess we have no other choice. Cause if we don't do it, what happens?
Then, then you need to pay more to borrow. That's their view.
Such a catch twenty-two.
They could sell it to a private entity who then has to generate a profit too, which would raise your rates even more.
Let's remember that the major rate increases is not the authority, but is Alka-San.
Yes, they're just the ones that process the bill.
Yep, you're right. All right, let's keep moving. This is item E, discuss an ordinance to add a stop sign at the corner of Milligan Avenue and Roslyn Street.
Uh, this was discussed last month at the agenda meeting. And, uh, and we did advertise an ordinance to have a stop sign when you're coming down Milligan Avenue from the east. Traveling westbound, which would be coming down the hill from the right from Roslyn Street to have a stop sign there. There'd also be advanced warning signs for a stop sign ahead because it's new. And then the traffic on Roslyn Street would continue to free flow to make a left or right at the top of the hill. It's been advertised and if you're in, if you would like to adopt that ordinance, we are, you're able to do so next week's meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Bachi. Any questions or comments from council? All right, let's move to another ordinance. Uh, item F, discuss an ordinance to remove the right turn does not stop. Or it's accept right turn, I think is the, is the actual language. Uh, I'm not sure. At the intersection of Shoyer Avenue and Monongahela Avenue, Mr. Bachi.
The, uh, this is, uh, this is a discussion we've had numerous times over the last year or two about what we can do to improve the safety at that intersection. A month or two ago, we talked about maybe putting a traffic mirror there. Um, the problem is there's no, uh, there are no poles right at the intersection where we, where they would need to be to place a mirror. For it to have any use. Um, one of the, one of the other things we talked about was to make that a complete stop when you're coming up Monongahela and making the right. Right now you don't have to stop. If you make a right, you have to stop. If you make a left, this ordinance would require it to be a, a, a full, complete stop. Um, we would also put off advanced signage, you know, about the change in the traffic pattern. And then that would be a full stop sign. Uh, this has been advertised. If you wish to adopt next week, you're, you are able to.
And will there be some language that also would say, uh, traffic from right does not stop?
Yes, there will be, uh, there will be, there would be a supplemental sign below it. There would be one of the yellow ones that, um. Uh, you see around town, you know, where there are not four-way intersections. Um, they would say you got traffic from right. If the other side of, on Shoyer, it does say oncoming traffic does not stop. And this will be a traffic from right doesn't stop.
Great questions or comments from council? All right, moving on. Uh, item G, discuss a vacant property recovery program application adjacent to Two Farkas Place.
Uh, the owner of Two Farkas Place has requested a vacant property recovery program. Uh, submitted an application through Allegheny County, which they then forwarded to us for our, um, signing off on a resolution to do so. Um, he would like to obtain the property that's adjacent to his. Now this property owner doesn't currently live in the house, but he, he owns the house. It's been in his family since nineteen fifty-seven. And he is retiring and is in the process of moving back into the house and would like to obtain this adjacent overgrown property. This is not a property that the borough maintains. Um, so it wouldn't, you know, this wouldn't be one of those where it takes something off our plate. But it does get a tax, seriously tax delinquent property back onto the tax rolls.
Questions or comments from council?
Is this, I, I know there was a property right there on Farkas Place that was due for demolition. Is this?
This is not it.
It's, it's not that property. Okay. Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Item H, discuss a proposed agreement with Humane Action Pittsburgh to allow the use of property known as tax parcels one, seven, eight dash D dash one, one, one. And one, seven, eight dash D dash one, one, five on Edgewood Avenue to install a native species pollinator garden. Mr. Bachi, if you want to give, uh, introduce this.
Yeah, last month's meeting, there was a vote was taken where, um, there was a great, you know, the vote was passed to use the, uh, property on Edgewood Avenue. For, uh, humane action Pittsburgh to create a native species pollinator garden. Mr. McTiernan has drafted and, and circulated a proposed agreement between Swissville and Hap. Uh, for the use of that property. And if you wish to vote on it, you can do so next week.
All right. Questions or comments about this item?
Yes, I sent out a little, I don't know, my walkabout report relatively speaking. Of what happened when I went on to walkabout. And I would like to say that, you know, it's really sad that everybody couldn't come. I understand that it was during the week. It was a Friday. So, um. Uh, it is what it is, but I did get, um, uh, Bill, uh, Mr. Price was able to come with me. Um, and I think it's really important when you're making decisions that you should probably go see the different types of lots and stuff that we had. We didn't really do that. I have really not much of an objection to using this site per se, and I, I wrote down some of the pros and cons that they had with that. Um, and we went around and we were able to get to look at on that site and the site on Monongahela. That was only two of them. There are like fifteen sites that we have that no one thought about. But what I do want to make sure is that as we go forward to do different things, you have to, we. We need to have a plan for the different, you know, properties that we have, especially these vacant lots. You know, it's nice to bring these different programs in. It's nice to do those types of things. But we should also look and, and you'll see what you read about in my, in my little thing is that, you know, what is the traffic going to be like? We need to ask the residents who are going to be right around there. I can't really see any negatives to anything, right? But we need to ask the residents what they want. How many people are walking in that area? How can we make it accessible? To the, you know, to a large amount of people. And I don't think we all did our due diligence in that. Um, you know, I was away the one time I was away. And you know, I just felt it was a little bit rushed in terms of everybody going through it. Um, I, the person from Hap, um, I think it was Shannon, very nice, was completely willing to go to the different sites. Pointed out the pros and cons of, of, of both of the sites and what would have to be done for it. I did have, I think at least two more questions in terms of, you know, I think the topsoil for the, if, if they went to a second site, would they need topsoil for that one? Um, you know, she talked to me about how they would have to dig a little, a little deeper for, um. To put in the trees and how the first site, um, the natural vegetation that's already there was pretty good in terms of being able to shade the project. Uh, she also said that they could do whatever we wanted, that they could do it in two stages. They can do it in three stages, whatever we wanted, they would do. Um, but of course, you know, the sooner, if they wanted to get something started, um, you know, that would be in there sooner. Then of course they would like to work quicker to do it and have that done by September. But they said, you know, if it happened to happen that they would have to take longer, they would do it in two phases. So, you know, I just think that as a council, we're supposed to all go out and look at these things. This is our neighborhood. I mean, I learned a lot of different things about our neighborhood. Some of those areas aren't areas I necessarily walk in all the time. And we probably need to have a strategic plan. Uh, for some of the other lots that we have going on. Um, because this is going to bring the pollinator project per se is going to bring a really, uh, some type of beautification. That we need, but there, there, there are questions that I don't think everybody's going over, but, but that's just me. I think the project in and of itself is great. You know, I don't really have any problems with it. I just think that, you know, if we could have, you know, the, the, I don't think it's that much of an effort to knock on people's doors. And do a survey and ask them a question. Uh, we did that for the climate action plan. You know, people actually just knocked on doors, especially for the people in the neighborhoods. There are some neighborhoods that might benefit a little bit more. From, from, from extra beautification efforts, right? So I hope you all take that into consideration. I'm not wagging my finger at anyone. Cause I know we're all very, very busy people, but one of the things we all said we were going to do was have due diligence. And do a little more research on things. And I don't think asking for a little extra time, which I enjoyed, by the way, I enjoyed. Although it was a really hot day when we did it, but I enjoyed it. I enjoyed what Shannon had to say. Very, very, um, you know, it, it was a very good conversation and she was very thorough in, in what she told us. So I would just say that council needs to be a little more thorough in, in what they do. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Alfonso Wells. Uh, we got lots of hands. Ms. Gales will go, we'll go in order as they came up. You're up, Ms. Gales.
Can I go last? I'm sorry. I'm highlighting on this contract, the, the areas that I, I did have comments about.
Sure. Why don't you, uh, lower your hand and then raise it again and that I'll put you at the, the, the back end.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. Ms. Salisbury, go ahead.
Sure. So, um, I spoke to, uh, Shannon Dickerson, who is the director of operations from Humane Action Pittsburgh back on August fifth. When, uh, Mr. Price and Ms. Alfonso Wells were able to go and visit the site. Um, I have to walk past it and look at its gravelly wonderfulness, uh, every day because it's on my way to work. So, um, I look at it all the time, but I spoke to her. She said, um, you were a delight and she enjoyed visiting your yard. Um, and looking at your garden, Ms. Alfonso Wells. Um, so, uh, I got your email today, right as our meeting was starting. And I, uh, messaged her quickly because I think there was a misunderstanding because in your email you had, um, sent out today. Um, with your thoughts about the, the meeting that you had. Um, with her and I think there, she wrote back and she said. Uh, there may have been a misunderstanding. She's referring to, um, at the end of your email, there was a indication that there isn't really any particular timeline. So she wrote back and said, there may have been a misunderstanding. The necessary timeline, uh, is because of the restrictions of Pittsburgh climate for the lot on Edgewood Avenue is as follows. The soil has to be laid and the clover seed has to be in the ground in the month of September in order for the lawn to take hold and thrive throughout the winter months. The project cannot be pushed any later into the fall or winter and still allow time for the plants to root and thrive. Starting later than September would waste the seed and would likely result in the lot turning into a mud pit throughout the winter months. Uh, because of the restrictions of the Pittsburgh climate, um, the project cannot be pushed, uh, later. So basically what she, and I can forward this to you, but, um, I had just asked her to respond, so that I made sure there wasn't any misunderstanding there. But what she's referring to in terms of what they can do in the spring is if they are not able, because remember at last meeting, I think it was last meeting, I mentioned that they have to order these plants because they're not just like regular, you know, rose bushes that you snatch from Lowe's or whatever. Um, so they have to order them, and so if they're not able to get the, they can do the clover now. But if they're not able to get the other plants in, they can come in, in the spring and fill those in. Um, so that then they'll have all summer to really take root and, um, and thrive. Uh, you had asked a question about if they would need topsoil, if we put it at another lot, no, they would not. But what they would need to do is what the, um, folks who did the Flax Project did, which is they would need to go and get big amounts of plastic. And lay the plastic down, and it's called solarizing, and it's too late in the year to do it now. So they would have to do it when we have more like blazing sun, you know, earlier in the year. And then the heat and being deprived of water and light, it kills off all the grass. And then they would be able to plant that with clover instead. The idea of the clover being that it's a, um, you know, it's not a maintenance heavy thing to do. But I just wanted to point that out, because it might have been that she mentioned something about, oh, we can, you know, finish it up in the spring if need be. And she, you know, there might have been some misunderstanding on the timeline there, so I just wanted to clear that bit up. And, uh, I do recommend going for walks with people in the community, I was fortunate enough. So shout out to Seth Bush and Andrew Wimmer today, because we spent about two, two and a half hours walking around on Woodstock, looking at lots for other future projects, not this one, but, you know, other things that they would like to do over there. And they've put together a community, um, group of, uh, citizens who are doing, um, some, you know, cleanup projects and want to do things with lots over there, so I think there's a lot of opportunities. And I just wanted to put in a plug for the website Lots of, Lots to Love. So if you go to Lots, Lots to Love, it's not Lots of Love, but it's Lots to Love, you can mouse over any lot in Swissville. It's for the whole commu-, you know, surrounding community Pittsburgh too, but you can mouse over it. You can see who owns it, when it was last sold, if there's taxes that are delinquent, all that sort of thing. So you can see, you know, does the borough own this lot, does any, you know, who, when did it last sell? How could I acquire it if I wanted to do a project? You know, could I get it for the VP RP, um, thing? So if anybody does see a vacant lot and you want to check it out, that's a quick way of finding out information about that.
Great, thanks, Ms. Salisbury. Uh, let's go to Mr. McTiernan.
Yes, Mr. President, I just wanted to note that, and I'm sure most of council noticed this. I had allowed the, uh, HAP to take a look at a draft agreement, and they understand that council hasn't finished with it yet. But they did make some changes that were redlined, there was one provision they want uh, for reimbursement, which I would not recommend, but a lot of it dealt with signage. Permanent signage, um, you know, for at least ten-year period. And I just wanted to draw council's attention to those changes they had recommended. So when you're considering the agreement, if you have any questions or any comments, I just wanted to note that those redline changes were HAPs, and I circulated them, uh, this afternoon when I received them. And that's, uh, that's the end of my comment.
Thanks, Mr. McTiernan. Uh, Ms. Tribbling.
Just a quick comment, I didn't have the opportunity to do the walkabout, and I'm so sorry I didn't, because I was, um, under the weather. But from Ms. Alfonso Wells or Mr. Price, either of you can answer. Based on Ms. Dickerson's expertise, does she prefer one lot over the other? Or does she feel that there's benefits to one as opposed to the other?
She did not prefer, well, she, she felt that many different sites could be done, right? So she didn't have necessarily, she said whatever we wanted, she would do. So it wasn't like there was one more than the other. The biggest difference between the two that, um, and, and Bill, you can corroborate with me one way or the other. But the biggest, uh, difference between the two was that the lot, um, and I don't know why I call it Arby's Lot, next by Arby's, Roslin, I think I saw, it just doesn't seem like Roslin to me. But, um, the biggest difference is that that one already has gravel, so they don't have to like kill anything or do extra prep, but they can put the topsoil on top of that. There would have to be some digging that would have to be done, but they could already use the gravel that's already there for that site. And although I don't know if they need to, like, add gravel to it, I didn't ask that. The other site, um, you'd have to be, you'd have to, you know, kill the grass first. She did say that they could do it, um, you know, however, whatever way it was, you could do it either in two stages. Um, you know, there, there is, you know, in terms of being able to get something started, uh, uh, Mrs. Salisbury is absolutely correct. You have to, um, get it started at a certain time, because, you know, we're getting ready to go into, I know it's summer today, but Pittsburgh being what it is, it'll be winter tomorrow, like, in two hours, that's how it works here. But she didn't, uh, she didn't have a preference, she said the preference was whatever, um, we wanted. So she said whatever site, they could make whatever adjustments they needed to do with every site. They didn't have a preference per se, um, but she did point out that the other site already has some of the prep work done in terms of they don't have to, that, they might cut back a little bit of the, um, uh, of the trees that are already there. And, and of course, she said that the foliage that's already there was good in terms of shading. And then the, we only looked at one other site, right? So we didn't go all around the borough, because we had limited amount of time. But I think we spent an, an hour, an hour and a half or something like that. So we didn't get to hit any other sites, we only saw those two, two particular sites. So those were some of the differences, but she, she herself didn't necessarily have a preference, she said it could do any, anywhere. But the, uh, the site by, on Roslin, um, definitely was already, it didn't have anything on it to really like have to remove, except to cut back a little things and make some improvements.
And just to clarify, it's Edgewood, Edgewood Avenue is what that, that one is on?
Yeah, it's a Roslin somewhere, but yeah, I'll just say next to Arby's.
Yeah, next to Arby's, that works too. Uh, Ms. Gales, you ready to, to speak now?
Thank you so much. Um, so, uh, in terms of timing, and this is just a question to, and I may need to ask Hap this question instead of, instead of you, Abigail, but if you know the answer. If, if timing is an issue, I mean, is the, is it not an option to do this project next year? Around, you know, the, the season for, for this sort of, uh, gardening? So that the due diligence that Sean is, is speaking of can be done?
So the first thing I want to say is I'm kind of uncomfortable with, let's ask Ms. Alfonso Wells what Shannon Dickinson wants, or Dickens, Dickerson wants to do and what Hap wants to do. They did send us a proposal that we have in writing. Um, we have been, uh, I've connected everyone on council with Shannon via email, and anyone could have asked her any of these questions at any point over the past several months that we've been working on this. Um, I made sure to have a draft of the contract sent out by our solicitor several weeks ago, so that people would have an opportunity to review it. And, um, I'm kind of frustrated that people are waiting until the night of the meeting to ask these questions. Um, I am, I'm messaging right now with Shannon, she has asked to appear at the meeting. She could join now, she can join next week, she can do whatever, but, you know, other than the visit on the fifth, which was not summarized and sent out to us until six oh one, after our executive session had already begun this evening. No one has expressed any information, no one has contacted her, no one has, um, expressed any concerns about the contract or the formal proposal that was written. Um, so I am kind of questioning why we're asking secondhand, you know, what did she say at the meeting that you had? So what I told to Shannon is that I would prefer that everything be in writing, so that there is no game of telephone of what was relayed. So the reason that this is being done, um, on the timetable that it's being done is, frankly, we started talking about this in April, um, and I had, you know, contacted most, like, everyone on council and people on council, um, the majority of council were all fine with the project going forward, putting trees on the lot. And at that point, it was going to be all at Borough expense. I then moved on and found that Hap would pay ten thousand dollars and do all of the work for this. At this point, the reason that they want to do this lot is because they don't have to kill off grass, they don't have to wait. They would have to wait until next year, wait a couple of months to solarize all of the grass, they would have to do quite a lot of work. They also have a master gardener who's an expert in native plants and pollinator gardening. And that person has already sat down and charted out what they're going to do with the plants. And exactly, they've sat there during, different times during the day over on Edgewood, um, at the lot by Arby's, whatever you want to call it there. But on that gravel lot and watch how the sun moves, where the sun hits it at different times of day and how that'll change seasonally, so that they can plan it perfectly and effectively and not kill off, you know, half the plants, which is what I'm sure I would do if I tried to take a crack at doing this. So, um, that is a major reason why they selected it. If you recall, we also had a PhD in geology, who's also a resident of Swissville, Dr. Emily Mercurio, come to a meeting. And she gave a very nice presentation on drainage and water issues in the borough. And she indicated that this was a, probably the best spot to do something like this because of water runoff. Um, so, uh, that, I've posted that on my own personal Facebook, I'm happy to send that out again. She actually did a, um, report in ArcGIS software, so that you can check the water permeability of every single lot in Swissville. And you can see, um, how each one of them impacts that particular lot and why she selected that as her recommendation for why we would do that with her qualifications of someone who does that professionally. Um, so in terms of why we want to do this on this timeline, um, this would allow it opportunity to take root over the winter and be ready for the spring. There are certain, uh, seasonal, um, breeding seasons and that sort of thing that go along with a lot of these pollinator animals. I'm not an expert in these animals, the way that humane action is, that's why they're doing this. Frankly, it's because they care about the animals that are the creatures that flutter around and are the pollinators. Um, it's not so much that they love the plants, it's that they love the animals that interact with those plants. So those animals interact with the seasons and nature in specific timelines. And so if we are able to hit that spring timeline with things there, then there are certain insects and creatures that are able to take advantage of that, um, that garden at times that they wouldn't if we waited until, let's say, next August or something like that. Because of, it's like when deer have rutting season, right? Like there's certain seasons for different things. So it would give us an opportunity to have it, you know, earlier and have that, um, already in place in the spring and moving forward. And then since we're going to have all of that runoff from winter snow, since we will have topsoil and clover installed there, as we get water runoff from the hill and other areas over by that neighborhood, that will help, um, filter down through that soil, filter down through the roots of those plants, and then filter down through the, the gravel as well. Sorry, that was a longer answer than I intended.
I think it's very beneficial, we could have her come to the, the next meeting, because they, apparently, there's a lot of, there's additional questions that, that members of council have. And not to put you in the seat to answer for them, it'd be beneficial, since they, they are the individuals that'll be doing the project and they have the interest of doing the project and the program in Swissville, to be present to, to address these questions. Personally, I have not had any discussions, uh, about this, because I want to make sure I'm not in violation of any type of sunshine laws as well, like this contract was shared to all of us. So, and this is subject to a vote, so I don't want any sort of accusation or, you know, any sort of.
And I did reply all when Mr., when Mr. McTiernan distributed the draft contract, I did reply all to every member of council and the staff who were also copied on that email. And asked if there were any sunshine issues and how people should, um, direct any questions that they had about the draft. And nothing was ever responded to, I never received anything, I waited a week. And after the week, I sent out a reminder, please, uh, let people know if you have any questions or issues with the contract. Again, nothing went out, and I've had several conversations with Mr. McTiernan this week by email and phone and text, um, to make sure that we would have that ready, because I wanted to make sure that we got that out, um, well in advance of the meeting, so that everyone would have that opportunity. Um, I will say that Shannon texted me, and again, I'm happy to, you know, screenshot this and prove it and send it to people if they would like. But she says, Hap, and I personally prefer the gravel lot, it is a more ideal location because of the mature trees. It has already been planned for by our master gardener. Um, so the mature trees sound like they're a big factor, whereas the other lots, it sounds like are just sort of grassy. Um, and a lot of these vacant lots that used to have structures on them, as I found out today from walking around in Woodstock, have old foundations on them. Um, that would either have to be dug up or dealt with in some other way.
And I apologize, can I just say like a two-second thing? I, you know, I, I don't even know why, uh, for the, for the interest of time, can we discuss specific items about the agreement that are, are concerns? We already voted on the site. The vote passed, the site has been decided, we have a draft agreement. The agenda item that will be put next week is to approve this agreement, or not approve it. Can we, can we talk about the agreement itself? We've spent fifteen minutes here talking about sites again, we have voted on the Edgewood site. That's all.
So in terms of the agreement in and of itself, um, just, and some of you guys have had that, had the experience of whenever we're going into an agreement with a third party, you know, my goal is, I'm looking in terms of the protection of the interests of the borough of Swissville and residents. So, as an attorney, I know I'm not the attorney for the borough, but as an elected official, what's important to me is the interest of the residents of the borough of Swissville. So I did put my attorney hat on, just in the terms of looking at this and, and considering whether or not any sort of language in here is any sort of risk that we do not want to take. And some of the things that I had questions about was, do we need to grant a license? You know, what is the, what is the purpose in terms of us granting a license versus just saying that they have permission to install, install this, uh, this program on the land? Why do we need to grant a license? And the reason why I'm, I'm looking at that type of language, because license grants a legal interest, it grants a property interest that basically has to be terminated. Now, I know the contract says that this license will be terminated, um, after completion of installation or after one year. But why do we need to grant license? Why can't this, this agreement simply just be, we're granting them permission to install this? Not that we're, we're giving over a license, which basically gives a, a, a legal property interest. Another question that I have is on clause two, it says here that Swissville agrees that its employees shall transport the necessary topsoil. My only question here is that, is there any wiggle room that we're transporting this according to our availability? Just understanding the issues that we've had with drivers and our residents' trash not even being able to be picked up on schedule, because we may or may not have enough drivers that week. Can we put some wiggle room in here that says that, yeah, we'll transport it, but it has to be according to availability? Just me taking into consideration the issues that we've had with DPW staffing. Um, I don't want us to contractually be in, in sort of any type of issues if a driver for DPW is needed to carry out Swissville resident stuff and that driver's taken away, because the contract says that we, we shall, I'm just asking for.
Maybe we should let Mr. McTiernan respond to it, because he drafted the contract. But, I mean, again, all this stuff would have been great to have in redline a week or two ago when it was sent out. But, I mean, thankfully, we still have an opportunity where we have a week before our next meeting, but I think we should let Mr. McTiernan respond to the questions.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem tweaking the agreement, I think, uh, you know, certainly, I think it's implicit that the employees have to be available at the, but I could put something in, you know, uh, to that effect, uh, Ms. Gales, that, uh, dependent on availability. And if the, uh, Hap would be satisfied with simply a general grant of permission, uh, you know, I can raise that with them. I mean, these are sort of philosophical differences, I'm, I'm not saying you're incorrect. And if you, if you've counsel and has a higher comfort level with approaching it a little more permissive way and having that language in there, I, I don't have a problem tweaking it. Uh, that's, that's the reason I circulated to council.
I would like to.
I'm sorry, Bill, I, I personally prefer to go through these concerns publicly and with all members of council. So it's very clear in terms of any sort of feedback that has come to me as it relates to this overall program. So I understand you would prefer to a redline version prior to today's meeting, but I want to be very transparent to the public and to Hap in terms of my review of disagreement and what my take backs of it was. I have more concerns, just to let it be known. Another question that I have is clause three. Clause three that talks. Clause three that talks about the signage and the advertisement. Now, I do understand from the presentation that was given by HAP that they are going to put certain signage. And some of those signs are going to have like QR codes that are going to be very educational information. If informational to the community. But why is there a need to include the logo of any sort of partners or grantors? Because this is supposed to be a joint program with the Borough of Swissville and HAP, not any sort of partners. Or or grantors of HAP. So do we need, do we have to include this signage with any additional companies? Uh advertising those companies. Personally, my understanding is we're good with HAP. Signage should just have HAP on there. Um the next question that I have is. Bam. Clause eleven. That says that the parties agree that upon formal acceptance of the garden by public action of Swissville Council. Or on December thirty first, twenty twenty three, whichever comes comes first. Um maintenance costs, including utility costs, shall be the responsibility of Swissville. What are those utility costs? Cause I do understand just from talking to gardeners in the community and from native species gardeners. That the maintenance cost is minimal, but this utility cost is something new to me. So I need to know what is that that we're going to be taking on um according to this agreement. Because my understanding is that we're taking on maintenance costs. That's it, which is supposed to be little to nine. Um the next question I have is once again about the whole signage. And it's on paragraph twelve. That any signage containing HAP's name, branding or logo. Shall be maintained so long as the property is used as a garden or ten years, whichever period is shorter. If the if the property continues on as a garden past ten years, why not have continue to maintain that signage? As we are learning with this borough building, things tend to sit here forever. Um and so there's a strong potential and strong possibility that this garden will be here past ten years. So can we not include that HAP is going to maintain the signage past ten years? Just simply put on here that they'll maintain the signage so long as it's a garden. That's a a question of mine. And then the last question of mine, and I apologize if it's not the last. Paragraph fourteen. It says on here that as a condition of Swissville allowing volunteers. Or other individuals not employed by Swissville to be present on the property. Individual volunteers shall be required to execute an appropriate release as determined by Swissville. Holding Swissville its officials, officers and employees. Harmless from any losses, damages, demands, suits, judgments of any kind. The reason why that is a concern for us, cause that puts on a requirement of the Borough of Swissville as it relates to the program. That we're then going to be required to make sure each and every volunteer that steps foot on that. Um garden, we're going to have to get them to sign a release. And my understanding with this program is the benefit of it, of course, the educational part, the green space of part. But the other benefit of it is that Swissville is not worth walking in any sort of liability or cost. Associated with this program. And that seems to me that's the potential liability if we don't have all these releases signed. So I personally would prefer that that's not a requirement of us. Because once again, I'm looking at the best interest of the Borough of Swissville. So that we're not subjecting ourselves to any type of liability that could cost us money. And then it trickle down to the residents. Um and then that's just about it.
Uh may I respond to those last couple of comments?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. McTernan, and then we'll let Mr. Price have have a turn.
I think the first two we talked about, and I could certainly tweak it if you prefer uh another term rather than license. And um you know, obviously borough uh employees are not at the direction of HAP, but on their availability. But the items that um the scales just raised, the two issues on signage were just proposed by HAP today. So if you have objection to them, I can certainly go back and tell them they're not acceptable. Um or I could say that if they're going to have them, they have an ongoing responsibility to maintain the signage. Uh but that's that's your call. They asked for that. They put them in and I submitted it to you. So that's up to you how you want to handle that. Uh with respect to the uh uh the issue of the uh. The individual releases, that was simply something that was uh volunteered by the individuals who did the flax growing. And it that was sort of uh considered a protection for the borough that 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 uh. The individuals who were volunteers for HAP would sign a release in the borough. Again, how strong those would be or how they would stand up in court, you know, they're always subject to challenge. But that was intended as something to protect the borough. And if the borough feels too cumbersome, I'm sure that HAP will not be the least bit sad if we just strike that out. Um so uh I think.
I and I remember exactly that being a suggestion with the flags project. But the difference here is that the those were residents who wanted to house a program. And we're like, sure, great, you can do it, but we want to make sure that we don't walk into any sort of liability. So we suggested, it was a suggestion for them to get releases from the volunteers, not the borough.
Uh I mean, I think that's again was the idea, but uh we could we could make it clear that HAP has to provide them and obtain them. Or we could take it out completely. The utilities, my understanding is these LED lights, ultimately there'll be electricity lighting those. And that was the sense of the uh uh the reason for the utilities would ultimately become the responsibility of the borough. And there is an insurance requirement. Unlike some of the other organizations we've dealt with here, they have an obligation to provide a certificate of insurance. But again, the reason we circulate these documents is to make sure that the elected officials are satisfied that they're not too onerous. So I can certainly go back to Humane Action Pittsburgh and and uh convey council's concerns. And see if they will agree to alter language. So.
Mr. Price, why don't you go ahead and?
Sure, uh Councilman Salisbury is incorrect when she says that uh none of us responded to uh the contract. Uh our instructions uh were because of the Sunshine Act to uh respond directly to Mr. McTernan. And I I reviewed the contract and I made a couple of basic uh contractual language suggestions. And I sent those to Mr. McTernan and he responded and uh I believe he liked the suggestions that I had made. Um but um it it is our, my understanding that we aren't supposed to circulate that to the whole group. So um I was dealing with Mr. uh McTernan uh directly.
I apologize for misspeaking. When I spoke to Mr. McTernan, I wasn't aware that you had already communicated with him.
Now, I just got redlined a copy of the contract uh this afternoon. And I honestly have not had a chance to even look at the red line changes that they made this afternoon or that we were given this afternoon.
Thanks, Mr. Price. Um. So I just want to observe. I appreciate the thorough nature of this. Um I I do think that the, you know, this is something that to to Miss Salisbury point that I've struggled with a little bit in the past as well. But there, you know, I I put a lot of effort into uh ARPA uh budgets and proposals and things like that. And uh you know, things are circulated and then not really discussed or not brought up until the meeting itself. And then you kind of feel like you get railroaded by it, uh which is an unfortunate feeling to have. I think the thing that I'm just a little concerned about, that I just want to make known, is that. We have over the last couple of years had very similar agreements with EcoTone Renewables, with four one two food rescue. With Worm Return, with the, you know, Ms. Crottsley and and the Flax Garden. And there has never been this level of um uh walking through stuff with a fine tooth comb. And 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 I I understand that we do need to be thorough. Um and I do think that there are important suggestions that need to be made. But I I really think that I I don't I don't quite understand what is so different about this one. That uh we need to to be spending, I mean, what, we're probably thirty minutes on uh on on this uh this agenda item. That is supposed to be just an agreement uh that we've already voted on, as Mr. Mizer has said. Um with an organization that wants to work with us, wants to front ten thousand dollars worth of of stuff for us. Um so I'm just, I I I just want to uh make an observation uh that that just it, I'm having some trouble connecting the dots on that.
Just for transparency on my end, and Mr. McTernan can actually vouch for this. For all of those agreements, I actually did go um in detail with them for Mr. McTernan. And I took the same approach as I'm taking here. I am using my skills and my background for the better for looking out for the Borough of Swissville. He can assure you, he has the emails to show you, the red lines, my back and forth emails about. Certain language that was in those agreements. So I'm literally doing the same thing that I have done with all those other agreements. And so this is not entirely the same language. There is a difference in in language in the agreement. I personally prefer and I like the fact that I get to discuss this openly. So that there is no confusion in terms of what comments I made. Or what suggestions I made as it relates to this project. Because we all know that this is a a high interest sort of project. And I just wanted to be very clear in terms of anything I've said or I've done as it relates to the project. But I have taken the same approach with those others. I have not done anything different.
And my suggestions uh were minor and pragmatic. Uh I did make one suggestion that if HAP were to uh leave this pri- program someday. That any improvements that they've made uh would uh remain with the property. That's a standard clause that you see in a lot of uh commercial leases, for example.
Mr..
From the time, from the time that we were introduced to HAP until the vote was, I think, thirty five days. So I think that um this is moving along uh at a rapid pace.
But I mean, I think that that's this, it's a very similar pace to a lot of these other initiatives that we've taken. I I guess that's what I don't understand. I mean, you, all of these EcoTone, Worm Return, four one two food rescue. Um I I guess this one does have a little bit, something that has the potential to be a little bit more permanent uh as opposed to. Uh you know, we knew that there's going to be demolition of the of the borough building. And so some of the, you know, the, some of those other uh agreements are, you know, we're going to have to figure out what to do with them. Uh in the meantime, but I anyway, I I I'm I'm sorry, Mr. Bland, I need to let you speak. You you've had your hand up.
Oh, that's okay. And I have no, I like the program. I think it would be a great idea and a great addition to this Swissville. But I just asked Sean the question because I wasn't able to make the walk. But it's in no way to type up to decide on whether or not I agree with the Arby side. Cause if that's where it's going to be, it's going to be, I'm okay with that. But I do kind of take offense to that language a little bit. Because I don't, I don't present myself like that and I was just asking a question. So um in the future, when I ask a question, I'm just going to ask the question. I don't need a rebuttal rebuttal for that, because I don't, I don't live that way. But in the meantime, I am in total support of it. I just asked the question because I didn't make it to it. And like you see, everybody received the email right before, you know what I mean, we had another meeting. So that's all I have to say. I support it. Whatever plot it decides to be on, I'm fine with it. But I just needed to ask the question for my own satisfaction and as well for transparency for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Tribling.
I'll just say that, you know, I'm sorry I couldn't have typed it up quicker. I've had a really busy schedule. So that was as quick as I could do. I was like, oh, my gosh, the meeting's coming. I wanted to get it out to everybody. I will say though, that I have not tried to misrepresent anything that was said to me when I was on my walkabout. I represented exactly what was said. So there was no like, no trickery involved, anything exactly. And I wrote it in the report that they said that there were more shade trees in the other location and and different things like that. So my only point was just making sure, just like with everything, it seems like it's going to be a more permanent installation, which is great. It'd be nice to have that area taken care of. I'm always making sure that it's not just in one location, that we look at the other locations out there. There are apparently fifteen other empty lots that are in Swissville, right? And it's only, um you know, I see lots of areas that need to be beautified. I'm not saying this one doesn't need to be beautified. I'm just saying we need to think about it and think about the other lots in the same way, right? There are other projects that can be brought to this. I'm not saying this is not the, this is not the perfect place. But I did notice that when uh we did get a bunch of different sites to look at, no one looked at all the sites, right? You just looked at one. And that's not a problem, you know, but look at some of the other sites. There are people in other areas of Swissville that say, hey, there's a ugly nasty lot right here too. So I'm not saying there's no, that we shouldn't do the lot here, anything like that. I actually really appreciated being able to walk around with that. So that's my thing. I've always said that I like to do research and that is nothing that's different this time than it ever has been any other time, you know. So there you go. With the worm site, I looked and investigated worms. With the other stuff, I looked and investigated that too. This one had to take a little more time because I actually needed to go to the sites, right? And find the time to do that. And I was out of town for several weeks, so I couldn't do it then. So I just want to make that uh, you know, a statement. If everybody, you know, if you don't want to do the due diligence, don't do it, but I'm still going to do the due diligence regardless.
Thank you, Miss Elphons Wells, Miss Scales, and then I'd like to keep moving.
I just wanted to let you know in terms of those other agreements, they're month to month. And I know that because I worked with Mr. McTernan on all of them. And I want to also mimic what Angela, it is offensive, Chris, for you to, for you to make the comment that you made. I know there's no malice behind it, but it is offensive because it suggests that there's some ill intention or other. All alternative means behind the due diligence that's being performed. When it took over a year for a decision to be made on what to do with disabled parking violators. I didn't come back and say, oh, you guys are having some type of issues with disabled people complaining about disabled parking violations. When you tabled the motion as it relates to supporting the initiative that Sisters proposed. I didn't come back and say, oh, why are you tabling, tabling this?
Actually, you did. Just just for the record, you did. You you did question that.
But I did, I did not suggest that there's some type of alternative motive. I actually asked you questions about it. And guess who followed up with Sisters? It was myself and Greg to get the clarity that you asked for, so that the motion could actually read as you guys suggested. So to say that doing this due diligence, which is the same thing I've done with every single project. Suggested there's some type of alternative motive in that basically I would do, I would approach this differently for some other reason. It's offensive. It attacks our characters. It's not okay. And as a black woman on council, I'm going to protect my character at all costs. Cause I I operate in the same fashion because of the integrity that I have for myself, not for any one of you guys. So it is offensive, Chris, and I know that there's no malice behind it. But please be cautious of the words that you guys choose. Because if I'm approaching this as I approach everything else, and it's out of my love and my concern about my community. I'm using the God-given skills and experiences that I have out here in the world to better my community. So if you got a problem with that, you take it up with the voters that elected me, because that's why they elected me.
Mr. Mizer.
I just wanted to take a moment to make an observation to Miss Scale's point that she said Chris did not have any malice with his statement. What he stated was an observation. It's an observation that I shared on our last meeting. That this process, while due diligence may have been done behind the scenes on some of these other projects. The public facing side of the discussion around this. The empirical evidence is there that it has been much more involved than any other thing I have seen during my time on council or my time. Previously where I was just watching council meetings as a council member. Um I know emotions are high right now, so I'm going to try to keep my words brief. But my goal with this entire thing is we were elected, A, correct, to do due diligence. But we are also elected to move to, for there to be progress. And there is a balance there. There's a balance there. Some of us may be on one extreme. I may be moved, just one moment, Mr. Price. Some of us may be trying to move too quickly on things and some of us may be trying to do too much due diligence. There was never any mention of ulterior motives. We're all trying to find that balance because we all are on this council at ten o'clock at night because we care about our community.
Yeah, we've been meeting for four hours straight now, counting the executive session. Uh Josh, we council never heard of HAP until thirty five days before we voted. until thirty-five days before we voted to approve the project on that site. Is that dragging along for you? Is that too slow for you? We decided it in thirty-five days from being introduced to half.
Uh, my personal opinion on it is, given the thorough uh presentations we were given by Dr. Mercurio, the site study and the other information for a vacant lot that's been there for twenty-two years, I do think we're moving too slowly on this. But that's my opinion. That's why we have seven people here.
Faster can you move than thirty-five days? We voted on it.
Yeah, and we approved the site. And now we need to approve the agreement to move forward with this, so we can, we can have.
Thirty-five days is uh enough for uh due diligence. And that's, that's why I repeat my request that we have a master plan in this borough for what to do with all of our parcels, so that things aren't done piecemeal. So that we have a comprehensive plan for what we're gonna do with commercial property, uh what we're gonna do with recreational pr- property, uh property for use. We, we need a master plan rather than, let's do this little ad hoc thing, do that ad hoc thing because we're gonna shoot ourselves i- in the feet if we don't plan ahead.
All right, I will gladly volunteer for a committee to start looking into a master plan because I completely agree with that. But I'd like us to move on if possible, Mr. Stransel.
Yeah, I would like to move on. I mean, I think before I do, I I would like to respond to to Ms. Scales. Just, just, you know, the the comment um was very pointed towards me. Um, I do wanna say, Ms. Scales, that I'm glad that you shared some of the background of you uh communicating some of those things to Mr. McTirren because I didn't know that. Uh, that that was information I didn't have. I hope you know. Uh, I mean, you said that there were, you know, that you believe there is no malice in that, and and I wanna assure you that there was no malice uh in that. I uh, you know, I I I, I I hope you know that I have the utmost respect for you, uh, the work that you do for this borough. Uh, and it was not my intent to offend. And so for any comments that I did make, I I do apologize for the offense that they caused. Again, I I was merely trying to make a, an observation. I will consider uh my words. But um, I I still, I still stand by the the sentiment that I have because it it it's different. That's, that's all I was, that's all I was trying to to examine and under better understand. So thank you for giving me some clarity to that, uh, to to that point. So let's um, let's move to item I. Yeah, Mr. Batch, I would like to, this will be uh on the um agenda for us to vote on next week, this agreement. Uh, I do think that if there are, I mean, there've been a number of things that have been discussed. I personally don't have any problem with anything that has been stated. Uh, I I trust uh the the discretion of Mr. McTirren to to put that together uh on things that are gonna uh care for the borough in that way. But if others continue to have um other thoughts, feel free to to bring those to Mr. McTirren. And uh if we can just get at least the day before, kind of an updated uh redline version so that we can kind of see what some of those changes are, track some of that, that would be great. Um, all right, item I is to discuss the public comment policy. Uh, this is something that I know Ms. Salisbury had asked me to put on the um agenda for this meeting cuz she had some concerns that she wanted to to discuss.
Yeah, uh, so we had a change in our comment policy in April, May, somewhere around there. Um, and so I just wanted to say that I think it would be nice if we could incorporate written comments again. Um, I've spoken to a number of people since then who just aren't able to attend. And I know it seems, you know, a lot of us are in in regular, like, white-collar jobs where we sit on Zoom all day anyway. I mean, I know that's kind of a lot of my life now, and for a lot of us, that's been our lives. But for many people, that's not the case for them. They're still, you know, they're not accustomed to using it. I've spoken to some people who, um, you know, had to figure out how to use Zoom on their phone to call in just to participate and almost didn't get to participate cuz they couldn't really figure out how to do that. Um, there's still a technology gap there. Um, also, excuse me, since there, since people have to be um not physically present, but they have to be present time-wise, it creates a problem for people who either have consistent scheduling conflicts or for people who work uh shift work. So for instance, if you are not, you know, uh, if you don't have the privilege, for instance, of um, you know, a nine-to-five kind of a job where you Zoom, maybe you work, um, you know, in in retail or something, um, in evenings. Most people don't, um, most people in that position would not have the ability to attend our meetings. So um, over the past five years that I've been on council, I feel like there's been a big push to try to make uh meetings more transparent, more um visible, more attendable. When I started on council, we didn't livestream anything. Nobody had any opportunity to access anything. Um, I remember we had a particularly contentious meeting where um we had a lot of people from the community there. And I took the opportunity to say, how many people here, raise your hand if you would like us to livestream meetings. And after that, it became undeniable that people wanted to have livestreamed meetings. So we did it, you know, just with an iPad or with somebody's phone for a long time, and then we've been doing this. So since the the borough building fell down, um, or part of it anyway. But I just think that we need to be mindful that we're not being, you know, I don't wanna use too harsh words, but um, you know, we're not being classist by assuming that everybody has like a nine-to-five Zoom-type job where they have access, you know, to a computer and they have their evenings free. Um, I also had the opportunity to attend, and I paid for this myself. I didn't stick the borough with the bill. But I went to a a conference on municipal law in Harrisburg for two days um uh last month. And um, I was able to, or earlier this month, the time blends together. And I was able to um attend a session where they talked about public commenting policy and how it can be impacted by both the First Amendment, but also things like the ADA. So for people who might not be familiar, uh, the Americans with Disabilities Act does require certain accommodations for people who might have disabilities that make it difficult for them or impossible for them to access certain services. So for instance, in building our new borough building, we will have wheelchair accessible uh structures so that you can use the bathrooms, you can go, you know, in, you take an elevator. It isn't as if there are only stairs and no way to reach the second floor. And in the same way, if we have someone who, for instance, I've had people tell me I have debilitating anxiety, there is zero percent chance that I would be able to do a public comment before a meeting. Um, that could be characterized as um something that could be, need to be um reasonably accommodated under the ADA. I've spoken to people who um are very sick and can't speak. But there are also people who are um deaf or mute or, you know, any number of reasons why they are not able to um participate in a synchronized or synchronous, I believe when I taught at Pitt, that's what they used to call synchronous instruction versus asynchronous means of communication. So I just would like us to reconsider um if we can accept written comments and have someone read them out at meetings. Um, you know, I I read comments about myself, you know, Abigail is, you know, a horrible person or whatever, right? And I had to sit there as council president and read these things because that was our commenting policy. And I think we owe it to the community to listen to them and to allow them um a forum to express themselves, even if they're unable to actually um attend a meeting, what even though it is on Zoom and not a physical attendance requirement. So that's it. I don't wanna, you know, drone on too long cuz we're already at ten o'clock.
Mr. Mizer.
Yeah, again, you know, respecting time, just, just one question with that. Because I I I completely hear uh Ms. Salisbury what you're saying, and I do think we should accommodate uh comment in whatever way we can, as long as it it um, you know, follows the manner of time and place for those comments. Um, you know, we talk about comparing to in-person meetings where obviously the person has to be present. And we also talk about how, you know, somebody can't just yell out during a a meeting, hey, I have something I wanna talk about. Um, but I do think, you know, in in some of the examples you gave, uh, they're very good examples and very good reasons why I think we could look at written comment. My only question, and and this is probably for Mr. McTirren, is as, as being a proxy, you know, obviously, I would, I would think we could have some flexibility in saying certain comments could not be read if they include inflammatory language, swearing, uh, clearly racist or sexist comment, things, things along those lines where there would have to be some sort of content filter. And secondarily, is there any liability to the person who is being that proxy and reading that comment for the content of that comment?
I think those are good questions, and let me just comment briefly. First of all, there are situations where people have a disability, but that is defined by law. Someone who might have a job that conflicts with the council meeting, or someone who might have a cold and laryngitis and doesn't feel up to coming to the meeting. You know, those are things you might wanna accommodate, but those are not disabilities. Now, somebody who might have, uh, under the law, somebody who might have a permanent condition, uh, whether it's a emotional illness or a physical illness, that might be a reason that you wanna have a reasonable accommodation. And a reasonable accommodation is one that doesn't create undue hardship. There are many ways you can deal with it. It doesn't have to be a one-size-fits-all. Of course, one of the things people can always do, and you could uh work out a situation where someone could read another person's statement, uh, if, but, but I think the idea, I I am very concerned about elected officials or borough employees being obligated to read other people's statements, criticisms, opinions of uh individuals. And yes, you could uh have some restrictions on, you know, the language people use or vulgarity. But then you're drawing the lines, you're actually acting as a censor. And then you're putting individuals in a position where they're being obligated to read the opinions of other people. I don't think that that compelling that is, is appropriate or legally required. But Mrs. uh, Ms. Salisbury's points, we can certainly deal with that. If somebody wants a friend to read it, as long as we can somehow make sure that the person who's reading the comment is authorized to read it. You know, the person could give a written authorization for their friend to read something. There are things that the, that can be done. But A, there has to be a disability. The accommodation has to be reasonable and not create an undue hardship. You know, you don't have to go to any or every length. And finally, I feel strongly that it shouldn't be a situation where an employee or an elected official is compelled to repeat the words of somebody else. Uh, you know, I think there are other ways we could deal with it. So I I wasn't expecting this to be discussed tonight, but I'd be happy to go into it in more detail and provide additional legal advice. But yes, we are aware that uh, you know, one of the classic i- issues are people with hearing impaired. You know, lots of accommodations are made, or people who had, who have um animals that are important to their well-being. You know, that uh, whether they're therapy animals or individuals that help them with life skills, animals that help them. You know, we've learned to accommodate these things. So there, there are ways of dealing with it without, again, you know, ordering people to uh, read other people's statements. That's my feeling. Uh, because then, then you end up either, and and I'm, and I'm very concerned about then saying, well, you can say this or you can't say that. But there's no blanket uh right to read, uh, you know, make vulgar statements or to, you know, call people names. And that is not part of the, of the um, uh, the uh public comment provisions of the Sunshine Act. So I I hope I didn't go on too long, but that's my take on it.
Thank you.
Ms. Scales.
I know that another concern in t- in terms of the changes that we've made is residents have complained about not having the ability to do the commenting feature during live meetings. Uh, not only was it an opportunity for them to engage um right then and there, but it was also an opportunity for them to engage with their neighbors. So if somehow, some way, we can create that feature on our website just to be available during these live meetings, I know a lot of members of the community would, would love to have that feature back.
I will say to that, Ms. Scales, we, we did address that uh a a number of times. And I mean, best practices from uh the um, the uh local government academy and and others have said that that is not a good idea. Um, if residents want to have a Facebook post that they put together, that kind of they have a live commenting, that's fine. But live comments are part of the public record and most of the, um, you know, it kind of market advice from the, the experts in the, in local government field say that that's, that's not a good idea, just to respond to that. Ms. Ms. Alfonso Wells, did I steal your thunder?
That's exactly what, what they said in the uh local government class, that you, that in order to have the comments um not be part of public record, people can do that on their own, or they can do it on their own site. But you should not be doing that on the borough site. The borough should not be hosting uh public comments in that way. Um, that, that was really clear. That is not the uh best practices to do that. Um, now, someone can, you know, make whatever comments they wanna make on your own site, or they can make it on a public site with other people, but they're not supposed to be uh part of the public record because it's not during like public comment time or anything like that. So they want people to be able to have interactions, but not on, um, not as public comment where every, anything goes because you can't control that. Um, and you're not supposed to control what people are saying, which is why you don't have it on um, on our site.
Ms. Salisbury.
Yes, so um, this is something that I feel strongly about to the extent that I used to do um legal research and publish in journals and things in my former academic world before I became a sole practitioner attorney. And I'm at the point where I'm sitting down and doing research and putting together like a law review note for the first time in many years about this actual topic because I feel so very strongly about it. I mean, I know I respect, for instance, Ms. Scales spoke earlier, you know, we have three lawyers on council. Um, and we're all aware, we're not the borough's lawyer. But um Ms. Scales uh said something to the effect of she wants to use her skills for the benefit of the community. So while I think that there are a variety of legal arguments to make, which I will not sit and make all of because I think it's late and people don't wanna hear that cuz it's not school. Um, I will, uh, I mean, I used to teach First Amendment law at Pitt, so I have a vague understanding of the subject, I like to think. Um, so, you know, I will say that as an attorney, I often have conversations with clients in which I say, here is what the law is. But sometimes the law doesn't do much for people. Sometimes the law doesn't protect everybody. Sometimes you have to look your client in the eye and tell them, you're out of luck. I'm really sorry. There's no opportunity for you to get help here because the law does not protect you. So in those situations, um, you know, we, before I was in any kind of elected office, you just kind of say, well, I wish somebody would run for office who would do something about it, right? Somebody should do something about it. The ever-present somebody should do something about it. Somebody should run and somebody should fix this. Well, I ran twice and I've been on council for five years, so I feel like I now have an opportunity to fix something. So while the law may not require us to accommodate somebody who has laryngitis, for instance, because it's not falling under the definition of a true disability for the ADA, we have the opportunity to be kind. We have the opportunity to listen to people in the community. We have the opportunity to care about what people have to say. And I don't always like what people have to say. I've had people come to council and say horrible things about me, and I just sit there and nod because that's what we are supposed to do, you know? But, and I'm okay with that. And I offered, you know, when, for instance, months ago, a situation happened where there were comments that weren't read. I said, look, I'll read them. But I tell you what, as a compromise, I mean, um, I'm about twenty years too old to use TikTok, but I do see it pop up on my uh older person version of social media, which is Facebook, and people repost videos. And there is a little robot voice that you can put text into and have it read it out. So if nobody on council wants to or feels comfortable with or should, and advice of council, I mean, we did it for several years and nobody ever said a peep to me. The borough building fell down in March twenty twenty, and we started having meetings on Zoom. And we did it for two years and read comments out loud, and it was never an issue until like April of this year or whatever. So nobody said a peep about how it was inappropriate and bad idea for a member of council to read written comments. And then all of a sudden, it was a bad idea. But if it's a bad idea, then we could have the little TikTok robot. You know, I'm sure there's an app that you can put that will read out people's comments so that nobody on council actually has to do that. Um, you know, I'm not gonna go into a boring conversation about rep publication liability or anything like that. But I think that um, we owe it to our community to listen to people. You know, I heard tonight many people saying we have to go to the community, which to listen what they want about the borough building. We have to incorporate the views of the community. That's why we have a basketball court being put in. That's why we have a dual-purpose council chamber in the borough building, for instance. We have to incorporate what they have to say. But then we're talking out of both sides of our mouths if we don't really let people submit public comment unless they can actually appear for our meeting in a synchronous fashion. We're saying that we care about people's input, but we're not actually letting them have it. And then we're saying that, well, we don't wanna do this, and you know, it's, we're not required under the law to do that. And as a lawyer, I can say the law doesn't protect a lot of people who get, I'm just gonna go ahead and be vulgar. People get screwed over. People who get screwed over all the time and the law doesn't protect them. But we have an opportunity to make a comment policy that could help protect some people's rights to be able to speak.
Thanks for those comments. Um, I, I mean, I I personally am. Thanks for those comments. Um, I, I mean, I, I personally am in favor of the, uh, public comment policy that we have it now. I do think that we could, uh, adjust some of the language specifically for some of these ADA, uh, suggestions. I mean, there's already a clause there of exceptions to be made, um, specifically for the technological issue because that's, we, we do know there is that technological gap that we're working on right now, uh, as a, on a case-by-case basis. I mean, I think the goal of it was to simulate as close as we can what public comment would be like if we were meeting in person again, uh, which would have been, people had to be at the meeting, they had to sign up for it. Um, you know, I reached out to Ms. Stanton, to, to ask her just kind of some, some, uh, uh, what do they call that? You know, institutional memory of this of like how, you know, was that common? Did, did people, if they couldn't be, uh, uh, there in person, have their comments read? And she said, no, that you, you had to be there, uh, to sign. I mean, I, I worked at, at a job for 10 years where every Wednesday night I worked, so I, I wasn't able to, uh, come and make comments. And if I had comments to make, I, you know, I'd send a friend to, to go make them on my behalf. So, I mean, to that end, I think that I'm comfortable with where this is now, maybe with a few subtle tweaks. What I do want to make sure that I communicate is, you know, what we're talking about here is not, uh, it, what, what's on the line here is not, are we willing to listen to the community or not? Uh, as if public comment is the only avenue that people can correspond with us. Because we have said, all of our websites are published on the website. We have said time and time again that if people have questions, they can reach out to us. And so, um, you know, it, there, there is really no limiting of people's access to, uh, to communicate something to us. Uh, so I just want to make sure that, that, that I, I clearly state that, that it's not that if we maintain the public comment policy that it is if someone's working on a Wednesday night and can't be here in person, that there's no way for them to communicate to council members. Because there, there most assuredly is, uh, ways that they can continue to communicate with us.
Is it okay if I just add one quick thing? I promise it will actually be quick. I was on council when Michelle was president and I do remember people coming to council chambers back when they still existed. And, um, people saying that they wanted this or that. And, you know, people saying that people couldn't come to public comment and that type of thing. And members of council would yell at residents and say, if you want to be heard, you need to get yourself here. And people would say, but I need childcare. I can't, you know, people used to ask, uh, there used to be a startup flexible that provided childcare. And they asked, could we pay flexible to provide childcare so that people could have, uh, childcare so that they could participate in Borough Council meetings? And of course, we had nothing like that in the budget and it was never implemented. But members of council would yell at residents. And it was an open and hostile environment of conflict between residents and people on council because there would be people on council who would rage and say, even to the point of if you want us to pay attention to anything that you have to say, then you need to go and run and you need to get elected and you need to sit here because we're the deciders. You know, there is that kind of a language. And so when you say that you spoke to Michelle, and I, I understand that Michelle had many years of service on council and I am grateful for that. But under Michelle's presidency, people were not heard. People did not have an opportunity to have their comments heard. In many cases, they had to physically appear and often they were yelled at, even if they did appear. So I don't know if I want to hold that up as an example of why we're doing what we're doing going forward. I fought really, really hard when I became council president in 2020, that we didn't do things that way anymore. And I am frankly kind of sad that, um, you know, Ms. Scales, as she mentioned, that we've had the, um, synchronous comments go away. Cause I think that did foster some sense of community for people. And again, it may not be legally advisable, but sometimes what's right is not always legally advisable. So I think that we, again, we still have an opportunity. We don't need to recreate those days of yelling at people that you need to get your butt to a council meeting if you want us to hear you.
I just, no one's yelling at residents though.
Oh, I'm not saying, I mean, we couldn't yell at a resident if we wanted to because we're on Zoom, but I'm just saying. I don't want to hold that up as an example of, well, this is how it was before. And so it's okay that we're doing it now this way because this is how it was before. Those were bad times. I was, I'm the only one on council now who was on council back then, and I'll tell you, it was bad times.
Can I, can I have a turn? Cause you, you just interrupted me in that. What, the reason that I reached out to Ms. Stanton was to see if there was any precedent. If they had been reading comments back when things were in person, I think that gives some precedent in terms of direction we want to go, because that's what we're trying to replicate here. No one is, I mean, a- as you said, no one's screaming at residents right now. No one's saying you have to get your butt to council to be heard. What I just said earlier, a couple of minutes ago was, if you want to be heard, you have access to all of our email addresses. Feel free to reach out and make your voice heard. That's all I'm saying.
I think there is a substantial and very real difference between emailing council and never knowing whether anybody, you know, some people respond, some people don't. So you could send an email to council, never get a response, or you get a response from certain people. There is a substantial difference in how it feels to do that versus know that all the people who watch our streamed meetings got to hear what you as a resident feel. There is a difference between emailing council and having your voice heard on a live-streamed meeting that is available online, that is recorded, that is available for people to watch later. There is a real difference. One is amplified, is provided with some amplification. I'm not saying we're like the Super Bowl that people are tuning in, you know, to watch in, in droves. But there is a substantial difference between emailing council and having council read your email personally at home on their phone or on their computer or whatever, and actually being heard in a public meeting. Those are two different things.
Are there any other comments or thoughts from council members? Okay, hearing none. Let's, uh, let's move on to item J. Discuss appointment of an individual to serve as a building committee liaison. Mr. Batch, do you want to make any comments?
Yeah, we only had the one applicant, so we could, you know, if it's your wishes, if, if you're, if you like Mr. O'Connor and you'd like him to, uh, serve in the position of building committee liaison, we can appoint him by motion at next week's meeting.
Understanding the fact that we only received, uh, one application, I understand why, uh, members of council would just want to consider the, the one application. But it has been often said on many times that at just to piggyback off the sentiments of Abigail, we're not the Super Bowl, so everyone's not always running to watch these council meetings. So the only one, only folks that are aware of this opportunity are those that have communication directly with members of council or tap into the Zoom meetings or read the agenda. So I personally would have liked, would like to extend the timeline just to allow additional time for other individuals to apply if so, because of the simple fact we have the newsletter coming out. So we can at least put it in the newsletter that this is an opportunity to serve and receive possibly some additional applications. And just to be completely transparent, um, I was informed of the AIA organization, which is an organization of architects. So I was anticipating being able to just let that organization know of this volunteer opportunity. Ju- just in case that there are Swissville residents basically that are a part of that organization. So just to put the word out, uh, to, to more individuals. But if you guys want to move forward and put it on the agenda to vote on next week, I will not hold that against you.
Well, we could do it twofold. I mean, if you wanted to appoint Mr. O'Connor, because we did talk initially about two to three people, pointing two to three people. And, you know, if you wanted to appoint Mr. O'Connor and then still seek out additional members, at least we'd have one person in the liaison position initially. So I'm just, just a thought.
Well, then that's cool. I have no gripes with that.
Okay, we can then, we can extend the, put in the newsletter and, uh, you know, extend it, extend the, uh, time, time period for applications.
Thank you so much.
I mean, especially because we talked about having a few, two, even two or three, so it, we can consider it almost like a rolling application, I think as well. All right, other comments? All right, let's move on to our departmental reports. Uh, first we have Police Chief Watson.
I get any, Mr. President, the only thing I have tonight is to remind everybody out there that school has started. And the children will be walking, uh, back and forth to school or getting on the buses and, uh, going to and from school. So please be careful out there. Uh, the last thing we want to do is have, uh, one of our children hit by a car or, you know, hurt in any way. So that's the only, um, topic I have to make.
Great, thank you, Chief Watson. Uh, Ms. Scales.
Not to make it any longer, I just want to thank the Swissville Police for donating the school supplies that we were able to give out at the Woodland Hill School District, uh, Community Day. And then if some of you have visited the website recently, you'll notice that we have the full police ross- roster now on our website. So if anybody wants to know who, who our fellow officers are, you can now see them on our, uh, roster and you'll see them even more in the community.
Great, let's move on to Code and Fire Chief Wilhelm.
Um, just a couple of things. Um, I was off for a few weeks. I had a medical procedure and, uh, was out of the office for two weeks along with a week from family vacation. Um, but returning, it's been very hectic over the last few weeks, uh, a week and a half. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Batch and the Fire Committee for trying to gather together. I'm trying to get a meeting scheduled with them to discuss some personnel matters that we have. You know, when we, we hired some firefighters a few months ago and one of those firefighters ended up with another job and had left. Uh, we had two others leave for other job opportunities and, um, I've got to get some applicants interviewed so that we can fill those positions as well as discuss some other issues related to personnel and just the difficulty in getting people to work as everybody's have experienced through Public Works, the Police Department. It seems like a very difficult time to fill schedules lately with, you know, all the way around the borough. We had some storms on Monday evening that took down some trees and power lines. I'd like to thank Jordan and Public Works for addressing those issues. We had some trees down, a major tree down to close down Leclerc Street for a day. Fortunately, uh, somebody was able to come out and take that tree out the next day or a tree contractor. And the other thing I wanted to discuss with council is, uh, everybody's aware, we had that, uh, serious structure fire at 2402 Woodstock Avenue back in, on May 7th. And, um, we had sent notices out to the property owner, um, Penn Pioneer Enterprises, as well as the insurance company advising them of, of the, uh, Fire Escrow Act. We were able to receive that money that was required under that law. Uh, Mr. Chaney had tried, decided he was going to try to sell the property similarly to what happened at 2520 South Ratic. Um, and that building's still standing, you know, about 30 months later, we're trying to get that torn down. We did clearances on that twice. Uh, we advised Mr. Chaney that we would not release any lien letters and the proper documentation until we got the escrow and that situation under control. Um, but I'd like to just address that with council. We do have the escrow. Uh, it's probably, uh, a wise decision for us to pursue trying to demolition that, uh, demolish that property so that we don't end up in the same situation as we did with the 2520 South Ratic Avenue. Um, I had some conversations with Mr. Batch and Mr. McTierney and we're working towards that end. So I just wanted to put council on notice about that situation that we're trying to work through. And, uh, also one other issue that's going to be coming up and, um, specifically, uh, discussed this with, um, Ms. Salisbury. Uh, there's a property behind her building uh, in 1913 Columbia Avenue, um, where there was, uh, a person purchased the property, went to renovate it, applied for a building permit and a zoning permit for a, a wall and some other things on that property. I subsequently sent him a letter requiring a survey, a survey and an engineer's report because the wall that he was, was proposing to remove held up the structure next to him, which was a three-year apartment building and, um, required some specifications and documents to meet the, uh, international building code. And he chose not to do that. And while I was off, he went and built a wall and a roof and a, a very large addition to this house without a proper permit. So we're going to be dealing with that in the near future too. I just wanted to make, uh, council aware of that, that we're trying to, uh, deal with that issue and get that resolved in a timely manner. And I think that's it. That's everything on my list.
Thank you, Chief Wilhelm. Uh, Ms. Salisbury.
Um, so I did not know that they did not have a permit to build that and I've been watching that go up. Okay.
Unfortunately, I was off, like I said, for three weeks, came back and then earlier this week, uh, one of the fire marshals was out and saw this and he's like, hey, you know, he brought it to my attention. Um, I met with that individual today, put a stop work order out. And, um, it's not so much a matter of what he did was necessarily couldn't be done, but the problem is I think that he overstepped his boundaries. And part of that structure, I believe, is in the alley, which is the borough right of way. And the other part of the structure is on the adjacent property. And he did not follow, uh, what was issued to him in written form. So I don't know how that's going to turn out, but we're going to work to try to rectify that and, and bring him into compliance.
So, uh, the reason I originally raised my, um, hand was, uh, I, so I try to be transparent if this comes up with people. Um, I know sometimes it happens with the other lawyers who are on council. I have a conflict of interest with, uh, um, the property situation with the fire. So I can't take part in, if we're having discussions about what to do that, about that in the future. I just wanted to say that I have a conflict with that and I can't take part in deliberations about that.
That's the Woodstock Avenue?
Um, I just wanted to say that there's a upcoming, uh, fire summit, um, that, uh, we want to try to get some people from our fire department to participate in. And there's also some free, um, code enforcement update training. Uh, it's like a three-hour training on some new standards that they have. If, uh, anyone in code enforcement wants to, uh, participate in that, I will send you an email, um, so that you can see what it is and, you know, decide who to send.
Uh, yeah, I'm familiar with the Connect Fire Summit. Um, I've been in attendance of all of them and actually spoke at the last, at the LGA, which I believe a few of our elect, newly-elected officials were at. Um, at least one of us will be there to listen to that and the State Fire Commissioner in his presentation. Fortunately for us, we are far ahead of the curve in that situation, because that predominantly, uh, talks about the volunteer fire service and how it's very, um, you know, we went from over 300,000 volunteers down to less than 30,000 over the last few decades. And there's a crisis going on. Um, that's one of the reasons that our call volume is up, because we provide a lot of mutual aid to surrounding communities who also provide their services to us from their volunteer fire departments. But we definitely see a trend, um, in our surrounding communities to where, um, there are less and less people responding to emergencies. And i- i- it's really becoming, I don't mean to keep using that word, but it's a crisis. And, uh, hopefully they will have some solutions to bring some of that under control and change that. But the reality is, is we are under a model in Pennsylvania, all the way back to Ben Franklin, that's 250 plus years old. And we keep doing the same thing over and over again and expect a different outcome. And the only way that that's going to change is if we change the way that the service delivery system is. And hopefully that'll come to fruition in, in my lifetime, I hope. I keep praying, but we'll see.
All right. Thank you for that report. Let's go to Public Works, Mr. D'Ambrosio.
Yeah, um, obviously, uh, it's been a pretty busy month for us. Uh, we've had some staffing issues and I know we've had a lot of complaints about the garbage and recycling, but we've, uh, been doing our best to, uh, try to address that. Uh, the guys have been working hard. Earlier in this month, prior to the staffing, uh, problems, we were painting a lot. We were working on the crosswalks, uh, handicap spots and, uh, touching those up. And hopefully, uh, in September, moving forward into September, while we have some nice weather, we can, uh, get back into that as well as, uh, some, uh, pottle patching, because I know we've got a lot of complaints about that as well.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, let's go to Finance, Ms. Longenecker. Vicky, you're muted right now. We can't hear you.
Vicky, can you unmute yourself?
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, um, real estate taxes are up this time from last year. I guess everybody wanted to, uh, pay before the, uh, the deadline, so that's up. The, uh, red is up due to the sales taxes. And also, um, our collections are, um, up. Um, also the, um, licenses and permits are up. I believe that's due to the franchise fee that we receive. And our expenses are down from this time last year. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And as I had mentioned earlier, Ms. Longenecker is working with the bank to try to get a time for, uh, Mr. Batsheen herself and myself, uh, to get together to talk through, uh, loan options. All right, let's go to.
I have information sent out to, um, Joe and, um, he's supposed to get some more dates back to me.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's go to the Borough Manager, Mr. Batsheen.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Um, the, if, if you noticed, the bamboo ordinance wasn't on the agenda tonight. I did discuss that with Mr. Ansel. There are some, um, things I want to clarify before we put that on for adoption because there, there's some definitions about fallopia and running bamboo. This was, we talked about running bamboo initially. And it seems like the, when you read the definition, what fallopia is that's listed in there. Um, this may be a, a difficult ordinance to enforce because there's a lot of it in the borough. The, the bamboo is a, an ornamental plant that's planted on purpose where the fallopia is more a native species that just takes over, but people don't plant. It's basically in almost every alley. So, um, the goal is to have that on next month for, um, for discussion and, and hopefully approval with maybe with some tweaks to it. Um, but we'll get to, you know, we'll get copies out to everybody before we do anything with that. Um, Borough Building is closed Monday for Labor Day. Um, garbage and, and recycling will be delayed today on next week. So, uh, with the exception of Friday's recycling, will be collected on Friday. Uh, everything else will be a day behind and Friday's garbage will be collected Saturday. And the last thing is the, um, we have an opening. As we were discussing the building committee liaisons, we do have an opening for a police committee liaison. The current police committee liaison, um, has resigned as he's not available, um, as much as he used to be. So we will be putting that out on the, uh, on our social medias and maybe in the, I guess in the, um, newsletter also. You know, that if you're, if you're interested, one of the things we talked about at the police committee was to put a two-year term on it so that there's always, so that every two years there's a fresh face. Um, you know, the different perspective, different ideas. So we will be getting that information up on the website and in the newsletter. So, and that was all I have. I see Mr. Mizer has a question.
Yeah, thanks. Just to follow up with, uh, the bamboo ordinance, because I actually have had some, some emails and messages regarding that. I, I can confirm that I've had at least one resident tell me that they felt the, the fallopia inclusion was not necessary uh, due to its prevalence in the community. Um, and, and secondarily, I, and, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Wilhelm. Um, somebody came to me and, and expressed a concern where bamboo was planted and has crossed into other people's property. I- is there anything currently under our code where if, if a plant or growth is growing out of a yard into another yard that, that that can be enforced before this ordinance is put into place?
Clyde, Clyde, did you hear, um, Josh's question? He may have stepped away. I, I mean, I'll attempt to answer. I mean, I, I'm pretty sure there's not. You know, the, when, when a tree climb crawls over, you know, on somebody else's property, you know, what our, our recommendation always to the people is if it's on your, over your property, you can cut it. Um, it's not a, you know, it's, it's, it's intruding on your property, cut it. Um, they, you know, and basically like with the bamboo that you're talking about, that's already on somebody else's property. That's why we're looking at passing this ordinance so that there is some, uh, some enforcement, uh, ability by the borough.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Well, I have a few things that I'd want to share. Uh, first is we did meet, uh, for executive session uh, as a council to discuss labor relations, collective bargaining agreements and, uh, related personnel issues. Uh, the ARPA survey closed, uh, two weeks ago. Um, it's going to take some time to come through so, those results, but we got about, probably about ninety, ninety to a hundred results in there. Again, I haven't inventoried all of them yet. Um, some other announcements, we have a bookmarking is actually now available on the meeting, starting with the July agenda meeting. So, you know, on the website, if you click on a particular item, I believe it's in the agenda, it should take you there on video. That's something that, uh, Sarah Ansel is working very hard on and diligently on to kind of make streamline a little bit easier to find the things that you're looking for in those live meetings. Um, something else that took place in the last month, uh, Charlie Need had a gun buyback on, uh, August sixth and collected two hundred and five guns uh, from the community. Seven thousand dollars worth of gift cards were given out. Um, and it was already highlighted by Ms. Gales that, uh, Chief, Chief Watson, uh, put together and donated a bunch of school supplies that were handed out at the Woodland Hills School District Community Day that was, uh, two Saturdays ago. Um, and, um, Ms. Gales, Ms. Tribbling, Ms. Alfonso Wells, Mr. Price and myself all kind of took turns handing those things out. I mean, you should have seen our table was stacked full of pens and pencils and erasers and, uh, notebooks and all kinds of stuff. And so that was very well appreciated by the community. So thanks to all who participated in that. And I, I think that's all I, I'll share about, um, Mr. McTiernan, so let's hear his report.
One item briefly, uh, council's aware that Norfolk Southern Railroad had filed a petition with the Public Utility Commission, asking the commission to rescind its previous order requiring Norfolk Southern to make repairs to the bridge. The position of Norfolk Southern is those repairs are no more, no longer, uh, effective, given the current condition of the bridge. And so it should be rescinded. And today I electronically filed and I circulated to council a, uh, answer to the petition opposing the rescission of the secretary's order. I also filed a motion to join the Port Authority of Allegheny County as an indispensable party. Given their ex- vast stake and interest in this matter, they should definitely have responsibility. So we're taking a very strong position that the traditional, uh, responsibility of the borough, which shouldn't extend beyond the road surface. Uh, maybe the sidewalk should be maintained and that the major stakeholders with the economic ability to remedy these situations like the Port Authority and Norfolk Southern and other larger municipal entities should be responsible for the repair and replacement. So I will keep you posted on that. I know it's a very important issue.
Mr. McTiernan to that, I, I've actually had some correspondence with local business owners who understandably are, are concerned about this issue and the timeline. A- as we start to move forward in this back and forth, I mean, is there any, are we able to set any sort of timetable like this needs? I mean, I know everyone's anxious about it, but I, I just didn't know if, if basically we have to sit and wait until the railroad is ready to start doing their work.
Well, I don't think so. I mean, there are a couple of issues. And one thing the railroad asked for is a site or remote, uh, visit, uh, to the site to talk about the condition of it and, and the re- repairs that are needed and who'd be responsible. And that is a very common way for these cases to proceed. So I anticipate the secretary is going to set something relatively soon. If not, we're going to ask for that. So that's the first thing. And then there's always, yeah, not to get into the weeds too much there. Uh, in the past, what we have done on behalf of the borough is filed motions for emergency order to impose the responsibilities, um, on the parties who should be maintaining it. I mean, I think it is a little bit ironic that the parties who were supposed to maintain it are now taking the position that the bridge is so bad. They shouldn't have any responsibility. Well, the reason it's so bad is I think the people who were required under the ordinance to maintain it were remiss. So, uh, no, but we'll be aggressive with it and, uh, and I'll continue to communicate with council and continue to, um, uh, keep in touch with some of these options. And if we need to proceed with a motion, emergency order, expert witness, whatever we need, we're, we're going to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McTiernan. Uh, we'll go to item six. Is there, oh yes, Ms. Gales.
That's for the record, I have a conflict of interest, so I cannot participate in any communications on the subject matter.
Were you, were you on the most recent email that went out?
Yeah, I asked if I could please not be included in emails. So I'm going to put it on the record now. So it's very much clear. Will the end cannot participate in any shape or fashion.
That was an oversight. It is a public document, but I will be, uh, very careful in the future with that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, thanks for, for that reminder, Ms. Ms. Gales and for, uh, addressing, Mr. McTiernan. Uh, let's go to item six. Is there any new business?
Um, just a question relatively speaking, um, what time, and not, you know, what time? Um, do we have an ordinance in our borough that says what time construction, um, can start and stop? Uh, during the week or the weekend? Is there something that, um, because we've had residents complaining about some of the construction work that's been taking place, um, really early in the morning and going to really late?
Seven to seven, Monday through Saturday.
Seven to seven.
Monday through Saturday.
And no work on Sunday, I'm assuming?
No, no operation of heavy equipment is how the ordinance reads. So, you know, if they, if they're, um, if they're, they can work, but they can't run like excavators, stuff like that.
And do we have like a time limit? Like is there something that says, for example, that they can only keep you awake seven to seven? For like seven days in a row and eight, you know, and like the next week they can rest or anything like that?
No, because the, when, the, when you're doing construction, which is for the betterment of the borough, which the sanitary sewer line project last week was, um, you know, that, that was done to avoid sanitary sewer backups. Um, the one day I, I know that the person emailed, they said that they started at twenty after six. And what I would just advise people to do is if people are starting at, uh, six o'clock, call nine one one and the police can go out there and shut them down till seven. You know, they're, they're seven to seven, but the construction industry starts early in the morning. You know, we can't put a contract out that says no, no starting before eight or nine because our bids are going to go through the roof if they have a shorter day.
Thank you. Any other new business? Well, let's entertain a motion to adjourn at ten forty eight PM. All right, we'll take that first, second, third, whatever, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all pros. And we'll see all you lovely people next week.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.